Amen, amen. Thank you very much. So on that note, we formally don't call God in presence and we will start the program now. You know say na watalo ualude, not so? And this is a place on Iyon. And so therefore, we get the one way they make this place available for we, for the Ministry of Environment, through the Ministry of Information and Civic Education, can get this town hall meeting for talk about everything and anything we get for do the environment. So, I no say Chairman of the District Council not there, but it travel out of the country, I am told. And my brothers are supposed to know, say in all day town. But then the Deputy there, Deputy Brown, will go gear on the mic now so that it will give we the opening cuties and welcome we all now. So, Deputy, over to you, sir.
Fambu, ona own morning. I people are greeting from the leadership of the Western Area Rural District and the chief administrator, we are first of us in the cabin. Members of the high civil, I want to stand on existing protocol that the Western Area Rural District Council want to say it pushes a trouble of way unakan, at this town all the team. Now we all, this time it come to hold. And today, as we there, the people of the Western Area Rural District, through the leadership, want to say, we back on that. And we want to say that we are feel protected as this time, at the time for which we know about the danger where it happen our we country today. Not only the Western Area Rural District, but the country as a whole. Because of this, I want to say again, it pushes to we all as members of the Western Area Rural District, wake up, witness this particular when, when it be say, when it come for can talk and show me say how it be say we protect here of way environment. Today, I want to say na in plenty big bid for the call of the Western Area Rural District as rejects the Ministry of Information and the Ministry of Local Government and also the Ministry of Environment, the area who we live. Say to me, na the Western Area Rural District, we, they come for Yeri and for talk about the dangers we, we said because to the environment and how we protect here of that. Again, I want to say, we all we there, we say under the leadership of the Western Area Rural District. And I believe say, we all go do what we think we get for do. We collapse with nothing, nothing so far, no we be get to we all. Again, I want to say, thank you to we all wake up and then we all sit up and we sit fine and contribute towards the development of Mama Salo. I tell we all morning and I want to say we a caro, we a business we a car. As we de go, we a give big bid, we a look up for tell we na more. Ask the one of the leaders of this Western Area Rural District, I tell we na all thank you, for come, yeah?
Na lo clap for him, na lo clap for him. At least, na they should say, we get protection. But that protection there, I no should say, but they after the program, we report on grab now say, I want to do that, they after the program. I mean Deputy Chair no go be, supposed for me should say, you know, we covered during the course of the program. Anyway, I want to tell you plenty thank you and we give you the welcome. We slowly be getting to the program now. And the next item, na a brief statement from the Minister of Local Government. You know, so, I will gear on the mic just not for let talk, but by way of introduction. I think I'm excited and happy by Yena, not only because ina the Minister and get the responsibility and also, Yena so for support in brother, the Minister of Environment, but because Namio, Namio Big Brother, Namio Koto. You know, so whenever I day around, I'm always excited. And Mister Minister, welcome. We're happy to have you through the Ministry of Information and Civic Education in collaboration with the Ministry of Environment for coming can talk about environmental issues particularly in this part of the country and how it affect you and what you able for do for mitigate them. So on that note, I will pass the mic over to you, Mister Minister. Na lo clap for him small. I no say most of we na journalists, but the one who not to journalists, na fifi, yeah?
I don't know, na this are the use or?
Yes, sir.
This one? Ah, Timo. Well, the Chairman, Deputy Chairman, Western Rural District Council, Minister of Environment, the top level people that will come from the Ministry of Information and Civic Education. Me local government famu deh. Because when I talk about local government famu deh, as soon I moku moku around. This is our own business. I want to tell we na good morning and I bring we na greetings from the main ministry. Today, what we we de can start, obviously me and my brother, the Minister of Environment, we done the work together over a long period of time. And we say, not too, not too far, oh we Yena again, where we come for can talk about environmental issues. We, na the Ministry of Local Government and Community Affairs, we deal with governance and we also we deal with communities, how people they live, na the communities. All over, we na define that say we get local councils, like this one here, we na Western Rural District Council, were particularly affected by environmental issues. We also get, close to here, we get the Fritian City Council. But also, when you go up to the regions, we get various other councils that the way they operate there. Other than one and they, we get other various sectors, we get mandem, we get village mandem, we get councilors, we get responsibility, we get paramount chiefs, we, that says get responsibilities and then sub chiefs there, all over. So when we come join hand with the Ministry of Environment and also the Ministry of Information and Civic Education on this particular activity, where aim that raising awareness, na media campaign. You know, when we talk about media campaign, obviously we want for let everybody take responsibility for say this, not to joke business. This religious season in particular, it don't prove to we with the kind of damage that way it don't happen na communities and the amount of perpetuity, the amount of lives that we would all lost, we get lock serve where it be for say, anyone life were lost, na big loss. Or certain thing that they don't happen na their community there are, we believe say enough will happen if we be not look after our environment. And these environmental issues that we talk about, what we we de do so now? Now one of these trends that we will need for do, as a country, for prepare for any environmental issue. Because ona one great thing, if we prepare, we will get a better response. If we raise the awareness, we will get a better response. Local councils, na we responsible for sanitation. Sanitation, no most not there, even if tapa body, we some of good to tell me say, in all day, get your tea animals. Doti go most there, every south side water man there, doti go most come on there. What in our responsibility for take care of your doti? We don't see, during this particular season, how because we not a look after our environment, we not a look after our doti, how doti, not they come for come meet you na place the way they embarrass we? Embarrass we a lot. Small money, where somebody need for pay, for let them taking doti, for let them go dispose of our well, people they define a very difficult for me that. As a result of that, I see rain begin cancel no more. People they say, ah, rain take off, let we throw the doti over, the water go carry on more. As a result of that, the way activities there na their community they live, it cause we forget the kind of disaster we experience right now. We talk about belows, especially na the mountain areas, the hillside areas, difficult for let people they go there. Some man even get planning permission. Nobody not there right, say for go be na their side and be. Because government is challenge because of resources, for go everywhere, it de become difficult. Go be if I body belows, south side they not authorize for go be. What they happen, you move the soil, you shake the soil, later on rain carv, that place they not to the right place for me, it useful apps. At the end, when we they see them video the way they come out, people they say, upper government, upper government. Think first, by yourself, before ever you come upper government. Your actions and your activities na their area they be, very, very important. For save the environment, information say, we live well during we own time, but not only during we own time, but for we begin the way they come later on. If we not do that, the disaster they go moku in future. And not to that, we really want na we country. So I glad for there, this, the collaborative effort, we want for work together. Everybody get responsibility, everybody get responsibility. We need for all this particular activity and this campaign so that it will give information to the next power we not Yena. The next power we not get the kind of phone for look pan. The next power we not get television by word of mouth, we will go back to the communities. Let we get meeting na them communities they be, for actually raise the awareness with this media campaign it there about. So on behalf of the Ministry, I'm glad for Yena. And we always say, for work together with the Ministry of Environment, the Ministry of Information, then they help we, for give we the kind of visibility for the activities there, where we want for let them cover for me. And let people they know, what is good and what is bad. And a lot of the time, if we listen to the advice where they come from we, it will help we a lot for protect your environment. So now we all engage in this particular activity today so that at the end of the day, we cry the message of wow and all over the nation, people they go no say, we serious for environment business and climate change with all the forces. I want to tell we na not to thank you.
Sir, thank you very much, Mister Minister. The Right Honourable Tamba Lamina for the brilliant statements there. I mean a number of things that come up, so we not don't, in fact, even go into the discussions then proper. And I just also add say, where the conversations then they begin, we want and for be interactive. So we not just want the panel no more for the talk, 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 which you know we listen. Because otherwise, chances are, we not probably would listen to yourself. And I should say the essence of this entire exercise, now follow we listen to yourself. Listen from within the policy leaders then get for talk, but then also we say, listen to Una and benefit from Una because I should say Una's every experience is then very unique, right? Na here as the owner, they own our tradition, our communities there, but then more, I mean broadly generally. The Honourable Minister talk about collaboration and partnership, very important. He also talk about awareness raising, education for engage communities, for let people like, I mean it's not as if, then thing and they not done they happen before, but the fact of the matter is, we need for continue for do more of that. And also, so that people then will know and become more aware increasingly about the disadvantages if we continue for the harm, where environment, now communities there. Problem caused by rain, I mean I should say this rainy season here, we don't see plenty. Also, we have seen a lot of implications, right? Where the rain they not come, I mean me brother Yena so for disaster management. I mean eventually, when the panel discussions they have, they give himself a first-hand experience, right, in terms of the things then we in don't see and where they don't get cause for respond to. And finally, the Honourable Minister talk about who's the who they build. I no say we all want side them for lead on, we all want to only leave a bully there. But with that desire, they also come responsibilities, who's how they do am, how they do am, how they affect you in the next five, 10 to 15 years with soil erosion and all of that thing and they, particularly na the years that we would decide for do am. So all of them and they will form part of the conversation. And I just want for final, again, say thank you to the Minister for his brief statement. At this point now, we will go to, which I will call me co-host, and that's the Minister of Environment and the Ministry. Because, now because of them, may we get this conversation, right? For see how capable for beginner, but then find the pathway for continue then conversations there. And so, it is necessary and important for Yeri from the Minister himself, let himself can talk to we. The Minister, in name, Nadiwo Abdullah, you know, Namio Big Brother and friend, which he not know na that, and I will say for the very first term, the fact that I know him, he predate him. Because in daddy, when I see him, if I see a na right now, na onkuma i kela the color. That man, I always regard as an uncle and I don't know him, I get respect for him for a very long time. So, na transfer the relationship more or less. And I have a lot of respect for this Minister because he has done wonders at the Ministry and he they continue for do exceptionally well na that Ministry there. So, thank you again and welcome. And I will pass the mic over to Ram for let, instead say a few words to we all, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mister Chairman. Environment business, our all business. Minister of Local Government, Deputy Chairman, Ward C, Deputy Executive Director, MPA, Deputy Director General, MDMA, councilors, village heads, traditional leaders, youth leaders, family all we come today, ona morning. This today na fambu talk we come pa, and fambu talk, we na come pa a filee, we na able for talk freely. So, I de hope say, we come pa the discussion there, all manner, go talk, like what say na fambu talk we, we come pa. Because if we not able for talk freely, some of them problem there will get, we not able for, get to the bottom of them, for really understand them and for able for begin for solve them. We can have for exchange ideas, you know, as a ministry, we de work with colleagues then at Ministry of Information and Civic Education, because na they savvy how for get craft message and get out there. For develop ideas then, we want for can share with you now. But when we de can share with you now, once they will not say, give we feedback, because that's so we can able for improve on the messaging. Because I think say, we all we can have, we all, we all get the same goal, where, na for protect the Western Area from disaster, protect the Western Area from water insecurity, not just for we, we de now, but for future generations. And for that, for that we here we forget the desired outcome, if find that we here we for talk to yourself, they will not hold back. Because moku of then here, it better for prevent the problem than for solve it. Some problem they by it say, they hit you for solve it now, I believe it, it acts. So, governments don't see to say, we for able for operate as one government, I make you see different MDAs here, you see council now also, and for bring people then come together so that we can able for discuss how we can prevent some of them problem there. So I just list some of the, you know, problem they wear, I want to we discuss now today. Or we don't engage, follow we discuss now today. Water security, we all no say, this Western Area Peninsula, na in the catch moku the water for Western Area. Guma, then our Western Area Peninsula, the current lake, where the supply water na Pito, na daily. And all the future expansion, where they don't plan, all in this Western Area Peninsula National Park. So important, follow we protect the park, if we want to get water of na this Western Area in the future, not to just for today, for we begin them, for we can begin them. We left it on say, we cut all the tick them, na big problem go there na this Western Area and we not go for live. Disaster prevention, as my colleague Minister, we just don't highlight some of the cause of them disaster here. But even the cut tick, na a very big contributor to disasters. Because when you cut the tick, na the doti no man I left, where you can, in the western doti day, go down. That doti day, it go full of water there, na Pito, and all over the Western Area. When the water full up, the water no get side for go, na flooding the day, na the streets the day. It de cow, it de flood, we go na people they host them. So that we, that we, you know, sit on talk like family, how we give for prevent sadly. Sand mining. Now that one way, it don't, the rate at which we de do am, we really need for sit on and discuss how we can able for do, then sustainably. Because every few weeks now, we de see disaster they happen. Just two or three weeks ago, we see what happened in Alaka. Where the water don't come, it eats, you know, people host them. Place the way people don't invest their savings in, just like Gan de, it don't go. And some of them here, na see what we can able for, for avoid. So it better that we get the conversation now, that we talk to yourself the family, that we see how we can able for avoid that kind of problem there are. The whole point of this, na for talk, to we self. So I de hope say, when all we don't come, we na will contribute meaningfully. Because if not to that, we as a government, no go able for really get to the bottom of them problem here. And that's he makes so tell and they, governments go try for solve one problem, it creates other problem. But if we don't be we na all can here, we na all, you know, talk freely and give the feedback, we can able for, let we fine tune some of their ideas there. Then I think say, we can come up with solutions there, where, you know, 10, 15, 20 years down the line, we na all go then on a host there and say, well, na we all we can, na watalo, for solve them problem here. Where, day let today, we still, they see the benefits. So do ya, I de plead with all of Una, I de beg all of Una, we don't come today, for talk freely and make meaningful contribution to them, to this town hall. No idea, not a bad idea. They all not talk freely, because na the only way that they will we can move forward. And with that, I will wish all manner fruitful deliberations. And I de hope say, what we we de get out of this, na messaging, we go help, not just the Western Area, but the rest of the country, for avoid some of them problem there are all they face right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honourable Minister. And soon another here for myself, we say how we were able for join hand, right? And get the right kind of conversation, we get for do it to environment. I mention two things there, where I think say paramount to him, as the policy lead, but then also to the ministry where they represent. One, na water security. And with water security, plenty thing they now no say, they embargo this business, most more. The forestation, encroachment, also, na all of them protected areas and they we suppose for able for the generate water and keep up for we, so that not only we now, but generations to come, we will still able for get access to water. He also talk about sand mining. You know, Mister Minister, some years back, I mean if you go like them beach area them, right? They post a lines them, the canaba impact to that sand mining, they don't get. It don't take way, it done the kicking, small, small. And even, some of them being grown and they would they along them place and they you just say, the sasa, not so? And also climate change, that sort of affect them to the point where you see some of them place, then they the cheap, small, small, they go. So we all sort of essentially get the responsibility, you know, we wait say, I mean can I would doorstep now and I tell we go for begin the fairway now, for say, how we solve it? Something by that thing they get all it, na make the Minister in wisdom and the vision where he gets, na how we can before join hand and make sure say, we do the right things then, get the right policies, implement them, we na all buying to them policies then they, so that it go better for all the environment, we will look after, we will for watch out, we will for buy or buy round, right, and keep on well. And so I tell I'm very, I tell I'm plenty thank you for then comments then they and then sentiments then they we express, with all, they look forward to the deliberations them, where I think say, I don't go transition to, but then they put transition into then conversations then they, I want for introduce the other panelists them, we Yena, to me immediate left, na my brother, John Virojas, who na ina the Deputy Director General, National Disaster Management Authority. You know, it's, it's an institution where was formed by His Excellency the President, Retired Regent of Madaviu, precisely because of the challenges then I would see, yeah? When it come to the environment, climate change and all of that thing and they. But then also, how for manage them, how for respond to them, how for prevent them, very important. Few weeks back, I should say my brother member, na I be can at that press conference there, na for in a few hours. And he said a lot of things, with me say self, na be the first term, for let me Yeri, I should say we na say go benefit, I go me say we benefit that and they, for Yeri some of them thing and they. It was very insightful, but then also very, very realistic. And that is why you see the partnership between what they do and the Ministry of the Environment and me own Koto and Big Brother, Tamba Lamina, the Minister of Local Government. Because all of them thing there also, they touch directly on us also, na them various communities there as all of them traditional leaders then we suppose for the way they represent, right? They have a responsibility too in this particular exercise. And so, I want for welcome you. And then we also get the Deputy Chairman, Brown, where we don't give the opening remarks. I also get, Namio small brother, at least I guess small brother na this panel. Namio small brother, Dwight Zekeshaev, I'm out on the trenches for long, my life, finally don't come on the trench, yo. My old daddy in the trenches for long, alive, finally don't come on the trench, yo. I'm more than excited for her, welcome, he said, will be part of this discussion and then. Uh. Mrs. Binto. Instead of then I also, you know, I I I think nine are the most important person here, right? Because of, I I mean, the voice and the perspective and all of their uniqueness, what it bring to this conversation. So in particularly, I want for all clap for her, right, for the one who not to journalists though. For journalists, they say, oh, not for clap, the one who not to journalists, not for clap for her. And so we go, we will start this conversation, but in starting this conversation. Uh. Where the village headman are grafted there? Alright, Yusef, come. Come forward small.
We can, we can move now.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. The village headman are grafting. Come, Yusef occupied, you see, you know my way. You get for move on alive. Uh you see Minister, then the gap for later you sit down. It should say so tell not to pay the man business, no more you go in the park. And so tell now they go left now to. Uh you do two term, three term, four term, where you? Alright, clear. Uh we also get. I think. Mrs. Binto, I already don't introduce you, eh? Yes, now Binto Mosi, nine are the project manager now. Nine are the project manager now. Is it what not? But also they not the Ministry of Env- of Environment, you see, and they had a get two functions and get two, oh, say, where they perform, very important. Not a joke with an agenda again, oh. If now man be hold that position they have before, don't say no, let them pull one, let them give man, but when I hold all two, then we good to go. We get, of course, I don't introduce the Deputy Chairman. Uh we get Salima Tu. Usmana Tu Kroma, when I in the chair person. Uh Committee on the Environment, there? There? Welcome, and allow clap for her. No question, during government, we let foresee where woman and they take front role in this business, more than welcome, um. Can Sidon, he take a for be part of the conversation. And then. Of course, the other two panelists there also there are John Van De Hojers. And Dwight Z. K. Shaif, when I me own, small brother, boys and a big man. So we'll, we'll start the conversation, but how, how I know do I? Minister don't, Minister of Environment, Joe Abdulaidon, talk about two things. They talk about water security, they talk about sand mining. In addition to down the other things that they will know say, central. To then to team and the water security and sand mining. We get deforestation. Hmm, we get encroachments. And then water catchment areas there. Uh but then one other one, you give one for add into this conversation, which, which is the protection of wildlife. Eh, the protection of wildlife, because now that seen and they all they make countries attractive. How you protect your wildlife then, and make sure so they say they own space where we will attract, they necessarily toys it. Hmm, we in turn will develop, we in turn will generate revenue for government. You know, and make government able for look to all that means that. For we will forget enough money for, and back on. Uh which you will call. Social protection programs then, now so or development programs there. All of the one in this, so I want, let we start off this conversation and I will go to. I will go to my brother and disaster management, because I think say it could be very insightful for we all. Hmm and then as the conversation we go on, when I keep in mind say. Uh Una say go get the opportunity for contribute. Hmm, or contribute, right, let Una say come to now unique perspective as I did also say. Right, and be part of this conversation, now I let just break conversation from this side no more to Una. And because otherwise, I will leave you feeling very unfulfilled, I should say not to that intention and the mindset of the minister. Right, of environment and the Minister of Local Government, uh we then decide for can I allow get this conversation. So, I mean, I will start with disaster management, as I say. Uh Mister Rogers. In your experience over this period. As Deputy Director General of the National Disaster Management Agency. What you feel say don't. Pose challenge in terms of which you see firsthand. Now then communities, the way disaster don't happen. Uh we get for do it, encroachments, deforestation. And how that they impact, eh, the environment and they, and how Una self can come in. Right, essentially for, we will for mitigate them. But then also for get conversation with them various communities and they, as to how they can prevent them, right, from happening again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, permission, I want to ask.
Go right ahead.
I want to say good morning, when I with the staff of government. Remember the way they are the height of. Cheat away there, the demand there, the youth population. See, which yes, this again, I want to say one a good morning. And I repeat one a good morning from the National Disaster Management Agency. This is not the agency with the responsibility of manage disasters. Including disaster preparedness, present, prevention, mitigation, response and recovery. On behalf of government of Sarayu. This. The National Disaster Management Agency. Now an establishment of government under the will of the Excellency the President. President Dr. Juroth Madaviu. Where it is a necessary, I should say. For maybe get two achievements in terms of human security and environmental protection. They should say, if he in work with the public of the country, close the establishment of the agency. The three answer government that they get for Twitter, and it should say, on the eighth of June twenty twenty. Parliament therefore pass the act, and the National Disaster Management Agency Act. Will bring the twenty twenty, the National Disaster Management Agency, who said this is. On the nineteenth of November twenty twenty, his Excellency the President. Move further for, for launch the agency now state house. And since then, just a week after that, we find yourself putting a middle disaster occur. Uh now Susan State, one of the largest fire disaster, no ever occur in the history of this country. Where in fact, they get for this, a lot of people, not Susan State. But coming down to the question, make a breakdown on the question where Chairman not asked me. Uh family, they will not agree with me, that we don't get a serious change in the climate. Ten million in this country, but they get six months of rain and six months of dry. When I find out say it don't change. That's six months of rain, that's six months of dry, it don't change. Time within this control, they get seven days, all that don't change. Because of the event that happened around the world, all the global climate change. And at this, now in the impact, not only the area, but many countries within the world. Because of the global climate change, the final system will not have exceptions. Uh make that zoom down for what they happen currently, or not that one first, the way Chairman asked me. Uh inside Free Town, inside Sarayu, and the other part of the country. And we don't find out say, over time. The climate change, the weather don't change, the weather, the rain they can't, and the sound what they expect. They were, they change the weather pattern, it affects people they living, it affect communities, it affect life they live. So because of that, we see a lot of impact. We see a lot of disasters who we call, that various areas around the country. As an agency, you find out say inside this country, we don't do a lot of assessment. And that assessment, the point thing I say, we get issue they affect you as a country. One of which, if we get too much rain, if we get too much extreme crisis in, there will be water shortage. We don't do assessment, we just say, in some areas, they not have a mystery of this country. Uh around the month of March and April, we get for finding, if you go to these, around areas like when I go, Cambodia, we get for finding this. For get decent, access to decent drinky water, that is such you don't run. And we can also, the one way they get at the water sector, we don't engage in community, so they able for step up. For insurance in, in terms of bore holes, in terms of waterways, cleation, they will provide decent drinky water for the population, so that I want to know the case. Beyond that, if we get too much extreme rain, then you find out say the aftermath of the flooding. Flooding may affect many areas around the country, uh Free Town not to exception, other areas around the country, we just get a shock. That Cambodia, this get, Cambodia town itself, they get a major flooding. But that flooding happen in Cambodia, now as a result of some boundary challenge. You know, the river where they run around Cambodia, they go right inside the Indian Highlands, and when, even when you don't rain. Now Sarayu, but you don't rain inside the Indian Highlands, the water bank, they high up, therefore a ban for, and that time cause. They prevent food, you see currently, inside areas around Cambodia district. But beyond that, we don't need to know for make sure we do prevention, so that disaster not go occur at all. So how we run, so that we can forget and clearly, the first thing we do assessment. That assessment, if they leave you scientific assessment, if they leave you to many areas. And we will use scientific tools then, for do that assessment. If I not say over time, it cannot change. Time within they say, now flooding don't occur, people they don't split, but now I be the collapse, I will come to that later on. Now now, now fences in the collapse, I will dispose on the later on. But in terms of the assessment, if they leave you to many issues. The first issue, if they tell me the areas there, when a high risk, when a low risk, when a medium risk. And then it's the day, and by graduation. So we are attention as an agency, or we government establish, I will make sure so we pay first attention to high risk communities. People that don't settle in various areas around Free Town, where will the class are high, as high risk. Then areas in there, in terms of heavy damp fall of rain, they bound for the affected, either they in the seafront. Or they the opus, but they bound for the affected, so that agency will know this, we will see. Or get too much rain, the one in the seafront, whether don't do bad construction, then they get serious challenge. Either it says some houses that they they collapse, and why the house that they collapse, number one, many factors. People that don't do land reclamation from the sea. Whether they do land reclamation, they don't put houses in there. That houses in there, in terms of extreme weather condition, then they collapse. And why they collapse, either it's in a flooding, or it can be seen, uh on windstorm. Windstorm the potential, especially when you get velocity, they bring down the air, and this is the impact on the matter of it. The second, that issues are related to sand mining. I glad you were the Honorable Minister of Environment, he made mention of sand mining. Sand mining, and they will, it very destructive. If we don't construct it be, with environmental protection and with direction, I should say it will help with the environment. But over time, we don't find out say, people that make sunlight, are wrong places, and because of that wrong sunlight, it is impactful for environment. Uh it just be make reference about Laka. Who say, we sleep overnight, and following morning, uh last week, uh there is a one building collapse. But people that don't do sunlight, they're not almost undermine the building. For the level that, that be in the way it can not, it get impact on other structures, so four big complex structures, they fall down around the Laka. And today, we find out say, it very blocks through, and for this country. Beyond that. If I notice, uh when you take a look at areas, who say people that don't get negative interaction with the environment. We get stone brain tannish, who say attack the floor, we get waters, then waters in the way they construct, and for a short say, we get flow of water. But over time, we could not see, we don't find out say, people that don't construct, then you throw, then the garbage. Then you throw dirty inside the modern stone brain tannish, a way rain can, the water be blocked, everything that will happen, it will cause flooding, the water be going inside human society. Human environment, human settlement, and this is a cause displacement, which is really, really very bad, it affect people there. Beyond that, you don't find out say, the issue of deforestation, another factor, where it affect Free Town and other areas of the country. Time in this country, this country, you met the seventy percent of forest cover. It just made mention of the protected areas there, for example, the Gola Park, the Gola National Park, the Lumi National Park. The Otamati National Park, they pass, and they are pass, they are very important in terms of air protection for bring money can at this point, where me and you go very difficult. But you don't see, we don't find out say, over time, people that don't do a lot of deforestation. When you look in the dry season, it's mapped inside Free Town, it was mapped by forty three, then you look on the hills, all thing you see are red mud, why? Because people that don't do, they don't park everything, they don't get go, that's not a good way for protect the environment. So when you talk about the, in the rainy season, in the rainy, it will take time for they will get a kind of a replenishment. Or let grass grow, let trees and grow, so that we can get protection. The deforestation, it cause impact, because one tree, oh, they grow over time, it is.
One more, one more.
Forty years. If they spend a few of forty years for able to, for prevent windstorm disaster. It takes a man, a reckless man, very hopeless man, where nature for them, or you enter new power, saw and product, and expose the population to windstorm, to, and windstorm disaster. So that's why they think, they see, because we don't see negative interaction with the environment. Right, what they say, uh people that don't do stone mining, on the hills, around places, the forest of the sea, now in the lifeline of the population. I glad you where the Minister made mention of the protection of Guma. Guma very important, Guma they constructed in nineteen sixty, just after independence, uh just around nineteen sixty one, after independence, eh, the only mate. For code, for government, for three hundred thousand people. Now, why you look at the population, Free Town, straight to that, of what allow, the population, who are, by you. So, I would take the way you look at the distribution of water, in terms of the facility, and it not only for, the same Guma nineteen sixty. Or sixty one, and the same Guma over, and now Africa, so I find out say, need to focus to that part of the land. Over time, people that don't go to the extent, they don't do the forestation, they don't bring that trees there, and the volume of water will forget. A year for able make sure say, it support the volume of population, the large population, we talk about, about one point five million up in town. You find out say, pass the day for rationality, and this can be seen, they, over time, the Guma body water from green, in the dry season, we do rationality, in the rainy season, it better. But we get a strange situation, who say we get, uh limited water for, water.
Thirty seconds, no.
Thank you very much. Who say we get limited provision of water, at the end of the day, they get for impact upon the lives of the population, because if we not get water, water not alive. Beyond that, the forest is very important in terms of the way how the, the air they taking, and the trees and where they inside the forest, where they around me. Now out of this, something you will with money for oxygen, now that oxygen will be taken, what you the give out, we call them carbon dioxide. So there any relationship between weed and plant, so for able cause plants, then where they, they unable for plant at all, like very challenge. Mister Chairman, the issue of planting of trees is very critical.
In fifteen seconds.
Around Free Town and other environments, who say we get protected areas. I will stop just so far, I will come back to the complete point.
Thank you very much. You know. Uh you know, my own brother, John Rogers. He, he passionate for my job. Hmm, he get for be noted. For every single platform where I don't go, whether it really talk for the environment. And the work way they do, and the disaster, the way they see, you know, say, it take the job very seriously. And it very passionate about that. Uh and so, now I make for any opportunity where we get. Uh you not really be able for time up, can be scripted, because you get a lot of things where you want for say, and for able for pass on. Your experience in the hope that we within inside their room, then they go benefit, and also go scramble our communities them. Uh you know, for help for spread the message then they, so that we all go for protecting environment. Uh but, you know, you talk about. Water security, sand mining, what I think in the essence of this conversation. Uh then seen and they they happen, particularly when it comes to sand mining, they happen in various communities there. And this A S F now, A A way, we know say. Uh people in the mind sand now, yeah, Sasa, also, they take on, they can't go other places there. Uh Laka, Tokyo, them places, then they inside, they always in the mind, in the mind Sasa. Uh we are where, the ministry are where, and government are where, say. Now the people in the make their livelihood also, hmm, you can't take that there away from people there, so man, and they would don't put them beginning to school. Uh by then Sasa mining, and they buy trucks, you know, live their life, look after their family. But how do we do it? In a way we. We not destroy the environment in the process, huh? Or you allow that particular site for replenishing itself, because you see the one who the police Sasa business. Would then get an attitude, then they left a force. Hmm, and they move to other area there, it's, it's in their own way, in their own calculation, now a way for allow that side for replenish. Hmm, and able for look after the environment and build the environment back up, I be folks, so tell them go candidate and move to other areas there, so. I will bring in. Salima Tu. Usma Tu Kroma, who in the Chairperson for. The Committee of Environment now this council here. I want for know. Since. In this young community. In this young environment. On issues like sand mining. Within our experience. And within the council concern board. Hmm, as to. Uh then challenges then they, but then also how. Una they try for think through. Eh, some of them problems then they, because I, I, there is a reason why you make. Minister Tama Lamina there. Alright, uh they in charge of them local council there, some of them seen and they also have default functions. Uh, uh you know this, you don't wait for central government, it is not the Minister of Environment, who will come all the way and that, you know. These functions are default, plenty see now, they try for developer. Within this council they do, in this part of the country. Right, as Chairperson of the Environment for, for deal with some of the issues that are within our experience, and which one they do for the reader. So, I mean, ve- very quickly before you start, which I think I go do, I think so good, the time we serve now, anything between three to five minutes. You know, and then in the process, if one speaker don't, don't talk, do you, if any member of the audience gets something we want for say. Right, by way of a follow up question, or your observation, feel free put your hand up, because as I say, I want this to be as interactive as possible. Not to just one way traffic no more, yeah? Feel free, and then okay, find a way for do I. Feel free, and then okay, find a way for do it.
Good morning, Mister Chairman. Good morning, colleagues, um, Western area of our district, people there. I want to tell my twenty, twenty ten. As the chairperson of Western area of our district, environment, and agriculture, because I took committing.
Okay.
Environment and agriculture, they are the same thing. Um, Mister Chairman, I really appreciate this gathering today. Um, you mentioned things on the sand mining.
Hmm.
I really appreciate where minister, we, they tried to talk about this disaster, and we talk about the protection, how we for protect. Um, we, what had, um, security, and we get some certain things that will affect. Um, I tell you say, as a Western area of our district council, we said, say, we so happy for see some of them thing, and they take place at the, the districts. Because they not affect like, where other people like, they affect them now. You mentioned, waiting happen in Laka, where minister just mentioned, waiting happen in Laka.
Hmm.
That are one of the example of maybe the wrong sign mining, where they get. Because we as council, we don't stop that particular activity, may sand mining not go on now Laka. Because in therefore affects the people that will get for the, now that parts for that side there. Um, it not really easy, but some people will tell you say, now they then they. You go tell you say, now they then they fear them maybe. But when you tell us to change this other way, you go tell you say, no. But we want to talk to the people of the Western area of our district, on this sand mining, when a illegal. We get sideways illegal, we get sideways illegal, where you can say, it affects for the long run. Where, um, you mentioned on this other side, where, where they talk about this environment, especially the cutting of trees. Which is very bad. In the affect we get now, for example, it happen at Ome. If they don't space that place, or they don't get the whole people, they not say, yeah, in a place where you not fight for me again. But trust me, people they cut trees, they up, they tell them they build houses. Before I give up my survey, now I give oh my, and I guess this.
Hmm.
But they want the distance, everybody want for their Fritiam, everybody want for their Fritiam. We be don't talk, the last time we get a meeting, yeah, with minister, we the part of this meeting, when we even give me, as a chairperson. I even say, Minister of Lands, suppose for the part of some of them that we there. Because there are the people that will sign documents for people there. You don't know who say this land come up, usually they can't sign document, you might not know, maybe not the wrong side thing there. Then you will sign the document, you don't give the person, they got something, for making go, you go, you go, because. So when you tell you say, yeah, I'm to sign for, you go tell you say, I get documents, as a council, how we for the money from them, because when you go, the money, they use them against you as a politician. They say you can broke it, but you know who knows in front of the life of the people. Now, for your own safety, say say. So we want some of them gathering, that we need for involve the minister, Ministry of Lands, because they very, very, implying they do some of the things there. I'm coming to the sand mining, which is very bad. So in some way, go all first thing, say, yeah, you not find for pool, um, sand, and sand sand, so they affect the other people. So they go pool them, the next way to the, now for go build roads. Ask the place so clearly, but if you put a security around this side of the. Mister Chairman, I think you will help you for the Western area of our district, so the next one, the ten, now don't not get flood in our this community, our this district. I would just want to stop here first, because therefore come another party. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Uh, you know, of all the panelists that wait on top. Of all the panelists that wait on top, my sister, Salimatu, don't say something where I think say, supposed to be the takeaway for we all. He said, before me tap na motome, eh, on a chemical for my. Hmm? Before I tap na matome, where, if we in the car, we had to the car, I don't know what thing that will happen, surely who join therefore take place. Something that will happen, trouble go candy, number as come up, on a chemical for my, those high flats. It is very important, because, I mean, at the end of the day, in some of their conversations, they are, we say, say, suppose we will forget informed choices. Hmm? We suppose for know which who they do. Government to regulate, functions can be evolved at local council level. Eh? But what I remember who said, in terms of the place they all go. Some of them, they, you are reading, uh, uh, the deputy doctor, a disaster management. And the problems they would then get for they deal with and contend with regularly, for various reasons. We say, say, suppose we able for be cautious, take with care, as to the place they all go and say, now, I build, I will live for all family there. Because potentially, they place the negative problem for weeks. Hmm? So it's very important to do that, but then I would take this same question I asked my sister, I would send her now to emboss. Hmm? Because now they get the, now they get the policy drive, right, now at local council level. Uh, so in go able for know more, but then firsthand, in go able for give you in terms of within, now the council, you know, policy direction. Not forget, say, in the interim, if anybody feels the need for, for interjecting something critical or important, right, or for contribute to this conversation, feel free. But we give the deputy chair. Somebody there at the back, we suppose forget another Michael, who where? Let go at the back. Now make sure say the mic there, the worker. Say yeah?
If it's on sand mining.
Hmm?
It might influence most of these people.
If the mic not, who, uh, have asked the person for come forward, they can say what you want to say, very quickly. And we've also limit time to one minute thirty seconds of your contribution. Yes, please. Uncle at the big side. I'm your uncle, oh, by the way, Chief Young.
Anyway. Uh, probable minister, ministers, persons, uh, members of the high table, I stand on the. Um, I want to tell thank you for the conveners of this great picture. Environment, our own business, everybody they live inside an environment. If we destroy them, then you then destroy yourself. Now, I will for let for make, the ministry of agriculture and forestry, for make the good there. Waiting, don't destroy the environment. When some of women, they grow up. Women know of D F O's, divisional forestry officers. We know of rangers, forest guards, and every children in this country. Every children in this country, they get a forestry. Every children, they get a forestry, and then you get D F O, they get forest guards. Where are they now? Would that get away with all of them institutions that they? Now we go back. Because if you not go, who say, when you buck your foot, you just go, who say where you go, father, you don't go ever correct that mistake. Where are the D F O's? Where are the forest guards? Now, now then people, and they so wait, and people, so so, if we go back to the whole in there, and get every children, forget the protected forest. Where, they wanted them for dead, purely that nobody, no problem, and leave, touch them. But if you look now, the amount of power source away they sold and sold, it not almost half the population of this country. The power source away they sold at this country. And everybody, now they do no business now, and timber and wood business. How? Timber and wood, wood business, now that was just, I don't destroy with environment. That will be, as we share, and even when they talk about sand mining, they can't do the debt. People there, wait the money go, then be hit for a illegal sand miner. We therefore look into that, that will not pay for forget for say. Now two things are when, nobody manor go stop, now this war, breeze and water, nobody not go stop her. Eh? I don't put barrier, this has so dear for if attack her, no way in the life, when they come, if they keep on wanting, you are not keep, now go and go with that so. So, let me make sure for say, that things that not be get forced, that institution there, won't be get forced, where they protect the environment, let me bring their camera.
Thank you.
That's the real talk.
Thank you very much. So we'll take one more from this, uh, gentleman, and then we'll come back to, uh, we'll come to deputy chairman, let you just say what you want to say, and then we'll go back.
Councilor for sixty.
Uh huh.
Minister, uh, deputy chairman, for the councilors, and then. Uh, we are councilor for sixty, uh, the standing to chairman, I was here, I was speaking, thank you. I just want for her to, sister, women, uh, we, uh, together. It's a hobby, Western area of our district council, they try for stop, uh, climate change, or help the environment, follow the good environment. So I would go so, so I to sister. Uh, we serve the, we partners, we, uh, we try for that season, and last month, I told you, that, that city, the plant season, and in fact, all Westernia. They mother, we for the test for that, they be involved, and I am willing to supervise. Uh, but, we get this consequence, where we want to make this Western area green again, like how we start down, you know, Jorobe are born in that way. So when you talk of sand, asabi, when you part the top of forest officer, then asabi, becoming part of forest officer, now, now, the, the work service employee. And so in part, they tend, but they not a game, and they bad in the market. Um, we need to forget teamwork, for that we will protect this Western area of our district, and teamwork, they want lands. N P A, uh, the military and the police, if I hear, I'm, I'm buying now, for the military and the police there. You are seeing, they talk, they, in West Mal, they go, they go, they are talking now, not they go again, because all that, all, all that, this, all, all the workshops, uh, the whole area there. So the land they way, now profit, uh, placed there. When we go for go plant inside the day, you will get policeman, they go to the man, go, go beat up. I will detain, uh, for, uh, to us, and to police station, because go plant, I want they, and Jorobe, they down there, go plant two hundred. And the policeman, they pass where he was, and go there, they detain me. So, the land, so everywhere they plant, where they want to wash this, I will plant here, we will plant here. On that way, wash this, land, so all they leave, now for pure machine going, now for come make go, for them, for, for turn they land now, for many people there. So we need collaboration, by the way, for the Western area of our district council, for them, they finish that green again, so I will get water. But, they are the people, they are, they want, they don't go for day together, don't go together. And this has a chance, they are, they were, they say, no, stop now, they are, they are back now, because one of the benefits, we all of the benefits, yeah?
Thank you.
You are not of any to them.
Thank you.
What is your?
Thank you. So, I mean, uh, I, I, I still will come back to the deputy chairman, because at the end of the day, I think say, that gentleman there, now emboss this also. So now emboss, now he get, uh, supervising responsibility over both the individuals there are, uh, Salimatu and this gentleman. So I will still come back to, to, uh, the deputy chairman. But I'll just say one thing, and I should say, uh, minister probably in, in closing, cut his go, who talk about that. Uh, they mentioned collaboration with the Ministry of Lands, and no say, Minister Jiwo, they work closely with the Minister of Lands, I know that one there for a fact, yeah? But the details there, uh, improbably, we are shown, and now where they give closing, cut his follow on, I know, uh, the extent of that collaboration there. The reason we make the Minister of Local Government there, now because, uh, Minister Jiwo, not a wa, not a work in isolation, not in one way they work, eh? Otherwise, the work not go done, it not go complete. Uh, because you get partnerships with the colleague ministers there, they sit in cabinet every Wednesday, even at down there, they get, uh, their own interaction, and conversation there, on all of the issues there are. But I want for show, and I say, the Ministry of Lands is an integral part of their conversation there, and minister don't get conversation there with, with, uh, the Ministry of Lands and the minister. And they go continue some of their feedback there, obviously, when he goes back to town, uh, they go, they will get a conversation there of the Minister of Lands, again, on some of the issues there are. But we can now go back to the deputy chair, uh, for, I mean, and one other thing they want to add, who are get bylaws there? They got things say, now they will for start, you know? In all of their conversation there, which one they do, which one I know they do, which one they bylaws there? How they bylaws there, they help who now, in all of the issues there. Again, my minister, the minister of local government and community affairs. I want to say big kudos to you, and, uh, my minister of environment, Minister Jiwo. And also the tycoon, married to the world for a very long time, in terms of disaster management and security of the district. Mister Chairman, you ask a very sensitive question, we, they go see to me. We look at and say, my development, by another time. Now, very dangerous, for me, I would say, environmental impact is something else to talk about, today, at the nation. Sand mining, as we all agree, the Ministry of Environment, first, being with the Ministry of Agriculture, but now being split. For me, now one of the main ministry way for cheap, with what a man to be alive. Because without proper management of the environment, definitely, the locals will be known, or our life will not exist. Sand mining, for me, is developed to local council. And looking at it, council get a budget line wasted for sand mining. But, council, now, here, this part of the council, what I feel that. Due to human activities, when they damage the environment today, we say that we get just to place for mine, for the districts. That is Jorobe and Amanty. But Amanty, looking at the way where it is a, it is a great, the land. We say, to the minister of environment, I mean, the minister of local government, we get lost, the movie between say, now just once in a week, for mine that Jorobe. But due to economic issues, now this is today, people are going all about mining illegally. Council use metro police and use, the serial police foresee how we can manage the different areas here. But still, I would tell this, I was there, that people, when they make this policy, they go all around. Now, they don't clean up with others, talks around the area, foresee say, the mine, who say not for mine. For mine on area, as active chairman of the Western area of our district, I get areas there where it is a, I want for them to watch us. When I get areas there, in terms of managing our environment. One of those areas is amalgamation of laws. When this laws, the law say for like, it is a, we watch at the one law, money, try for, you know, go against the law alone, is definitely that will not get exact. If the council get a bylaws, as a. If the council get a bylaws, as I now give you, as we did talk, by next week, we will get draft of different bylaws, environment, sanitation and all others. We can be here for help me in the fight against environment and all of other areas, where we devote to council. If that knows there, when we call, we ask the movie, we go apart. Now, the Ministry of Lands, at first, been mostly against some such environmental policies. Why? Because they have it there in the books that we are to follow, that surveys and lands is replaced in the Ministry of Lands. Whilst the Ministry of Environment say, we are responsible for the environment, and they are asked, we go to that. But are they speaking the same language? What is, I read that with so people entering, Ministry of Lands, come and say, this land, they for sale. The Ministry of Environment say, we need for protect the areas. Ministry of Agriculture come and say, this land green beds, where they determine today by the Ministry of Environment. Then they tell you say, this are the buffers. But if Ministry of Land, don't say, they don't tell you say, this are the buffer, then they go back into the buffer, the day they said. So you may find out say, when one law they talk of one thing, say, they will protect the buffer, coming to the green beds. And what I want to tell you say, no, we for try for, make it this, eh, we get development and ecology, so we go offer this land, coming to the beachland. So the Ministry of Agriculture, they tell you about growing, feeding the nation. As I hear studying, they are what, each individual can, now we take for your study, of a certain individual trying to be for the mango. Saying, we need for plant nest, we need for this swamp land, for plant here. But at the same time, yes, it's under the Ministry of Agriculture, that we for try for go on with planting and try for see how we continue the nation. But here are issues, that feeding the nation, yes, is perfectly correct, but not in mango swamp. Because we for protect that, and we know it, the benefits go all around. What we will factor as climate financing, the benefit where they come tomorrow, for the mango there, we already, not be grown. So in light of that, for me, I would say, you know, the, the podium, I want to say, that sand mining is one issue. Where it affects the, the environment today. But if only we can get laws, the way it is, eh, speak to what allow, so, all I lost there, at the same scale, and we try for agglomeration, it's definitely that we will contain some of the issues there, where it gap off. So I, as I was saying, that sand mining, that western area who are business, we only get two points, where, as you know, eh, Hamilton. But as I now, when it is, eh, that, say for you, going for that, we will stop sand mining completely, at some of the areas here, and that only one side, I can't function. But the, the, the human activities, the illegal sand mining, that is the cause of this problem, so if the Ministry can come together, and other landieski for come and help, and she say, we protect, then areas there, it will be good for we all, I thank you.
Well, uh, deputy chair, tell you plenty, thank you, and also, uh, yes, the, the, the honorable minister want for, uh, say something, uh, in relation to some of the issues there, where deputy chair don't agree, so, uh, minister. Now, Mike did a walk. Bring the hand in the camera.
I want to tell the deputy chairman, uh, I would say, the very passionate, sir, we express. The other one I want to say, uh, deputy chairman, I think, say, who say he should correct the video, okay, the file on there, I think, areas there. Uh, after there, enforcement, 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 and council mainly for take responsibility for enforce. We talk say, uh, one day, then combine, one day in a week. But what will happen, you have been to say, eh, happen to be the week. You have been to say, they get some where they call dry ground. Dry ground, now outside, it is very close to the mine inside, they just mine on the capa cap, mine on capa cap, mine on capa cap. And the rest of the other days, no mine for the output, that's what I'm saying, the final, so you say. That's a low, not kill by law, because that one day they, they came for mine, for all the other days, they all, you know, consider it a risk. So until we enforce the issue of dry ground, let's say, the way the place open up, where it passes, see mountains of sand, the pattern of it. Until we enforce the law, or say, no one go to that cap, it could take that long before you come back to handle it. And that all they inside, they are, there's a conversation they don't get, for the enforcement of that, by the dry ground, I mean, from the mine, of pity. And as such, the control manager says, let you want sand to be mined, in one day, they came to mine, five days sand. Because they don't go to that cap, then the rest of the other days, then the piece of land outside, eh, for some, you need for look at that, thank you.
Thank you very much, so, see.
Just give you just a minute, just a minute.
No, I will, I will, I'll come back, no time door, and then, uh, I'll definitely come back. Uh, so you see, uh, there are, which I would like say, different, uh, different challenges. Uh, Minister Sefton highlight, uh, based on your experience, I see the leader Hamilton, uh, within, he also see as a potential, uh, uh, problem, and how, I, 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 I think say also, they emphasize the need for more collaboration, hmm? Be, between central government and local government, because you hear the deputy chair, and he say, the appeal, all of which he don't say, appeal, let's say, you are, uh, let central government come, let a partner, let a who, let a collaborator, sell the people for address, uh, uh, some of the issues there, you know? Uh, Mickey always say, when local council and central government, they don't talk, for all you know, there's a lot in common. Hmm? There's a lot of issues that they were, uh, in their conversations, and they all have realized, say, well, they come up from the same angle, we see it the same way. Hmm? And we all sort of like, get an idea as to how to move forward, one of the partnerships, and give this, you know, and I hope say, this conversation will help for continue for agenda and partnership there, uh, in the best interest of the environment and for our salud. I want for, come, I didn't come to you, I don't see you, I want, eh, my brother, Zedkeshen, Dwight, let you prepare, you say, small. Uh, one of the things they are with and raise, uh, in some of their conversations there, by that gentleman, now, and by Chief Young also, he talk about protected areas. Eh? He say, you tell the way, them be, we, he be much younger than I young too, you know, but because he's still young, and I mean, he get the name Chief Young. And the only possible way, uh, uh, get the locals, or say, young, even at the same. He say, but when he be much younger, then we get what you call DFOs there, also, will be, they will be responsible for protect, uh, the environment and get protected areas. Now, I'm not say, in a way, that is what the institution do, also, national protected, and, and, and it cover the whole country. Now, how you institution really represent, how one of the health? Uh, because protecting areas also, they touch on environment issues, so, and precisely, one of the many reasons they would make, now getting responsibilities today. How the institution they help, which owner see, based on some of the challenges that owner do here, from, uh, my sister, uh, my brother, when I councilor, from the deputy chairman of this council, within as some of the challenges that way, owner say they say, and how my institution they help, uh, for deal with their challenges today, but then also for be proactive, uh, in making sure, say, some of their issues, and they not invite it halfway, in most case. So I want, eh, I usually have to get between three to five minutes, before we come to, eh, we, we lead on a, we demand a guarantee, let's say, kind of doing on guarantee next year. Alright, before, but to tell, before I come to it, man, I should say, Mr. Shalvi too, I get for bring him coming to this conversation, and then it, man, you know, like, man, and they for talk last. Where is the talk from now, also, the part, try for get at this conversation now, and put our place, alright, so, Mr. Shalvi, over to you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, I know who. Where is this? Give me the hand, hold on. I think this one I hear like.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, and, uh, members of the ITO. I want for recognize, uh, the presence of our able as KTO, Minister of the Environment and Climate Change, uh, whoever this, uh, do have life. And, uh, the Ministry of Environment staff, and, uh, the National Protected Area Authority, who are the NPA, for some others, who present in this hall. Good morning, uh, yes, good morning. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for the question, where you know, who's with the National Protected Area Authority. Uh, the National Protected Area Authority come into existence in twenty twelve, of which, uh, that institution, they establish a for letting it become an institution where for manage two ecosystems, uh, whether the terrestrial ecosystem, or whether the wet and, and marine ecosystem. So therefore, uh, the institution gets the supervision role over fifteen protected areas in this country. So Western Area, the International Park, where I gave a question today, and we are stakeholders of the very Western Area, the International Park, that assembled today. They would say, that does one of their ecosystem, and they will be talking about, we get for doing, the terrestrial and the marine ecosystem, at the Western Area, the International Park. So, um, we don't be helped in many ways since the establishment of the NPA. I, anyway, somebody mentioned, they say that you get, uh, 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 directors of forest, forestry, that we get, uh, forest guards, that we get forest raiders. I just want to add, before you understand, say, transformation of the project place, now the Ministry of Agriculture, where they may see the establishment, uh, hopefully, probably, when the Ministry of Environment talk like to be, and under the Ministry of Environment, we get the National Protected Area Authority as an agency under the Ministry of Environment. We get the EPA, when another agency, we get irrigation agency, all of the agencies there, they honor the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change. So, we get the rest of the mission from the ministry. So if, when you talk about, in one of the ecosystem there, when, uh, or one of the parks, and we talk about, I have to do, in the Western Area, the International Park, where you don't become very much buller tied to the activities of the, where the people go in residence, and where the people definitely do activities, you know, right? We don't see the reaction of our manager to us. One, the NPAA now, one of the only authority, where you get the power for enforce the laws within an act. Now, we can demolish without court permission, now we definitely do arrest, we do persecution. Now, we can cease or confiscate property, so we meet people in the work town area, without no court permission, so we don't give you that power. So if they ask about DFOs, or forest raiders, or forest guards, I want to add, I know say, the NPAA, when are the National Protected Area Authority, get them one day, where we call forest guards. If we can took, uh, look around, we get people like in the forest guard uniform, we are not smart, men, eh, see owner, or say, we get them people there. Where now, then, we be brought all over the Western Area, the International Park, we get fifteen zones, within this Western Area, National Park, where we be brought raiders eh, we get the guy, or make sure, say, equipment not in place, but, I glad you for this meeting, where we need straight for. One, I'm glad where you can check the mania, two, I'm glad where the council is on the mania, three, I'm glad where you committed to a mania. Mister Chairman, by your kind permission, one of the factors, where responsible for the forestation, and enforcement of the Western Area, the International Park, that you commit to people themselves. That is one. Two, some of you, they check it, I don't know who's not a responsibility, who they elected, they will go and allocate protected areas to people. When you go and do it for, you don't understand, I check in this state, I check in this place, we get a responsibility right now, to challenge right now, at sense, uh, 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 area, and now where they call, and then east them up, they recover the tree, now protected area, wherever you guys go, they get a very serious challenge, and start off, with the people, where they say, that they need the land to ABC. So we get a responsibility, we are monitoring and protecting the protected area of Western Area, and the other fourteen protected areas all over the country. But the quest for build houses, people in the world is to be on a places where they not right, as I speak to you now, we do demolition exercise. We don't begin the demolition exercise on Comfort Bridge, and we are unable to demolition, we are also doing reforestation. And I want to tell it to organizations, where they don't definitely come for support, the Environment Ministry and its agencies, but I'll make sure, say, we do reforestation. Green scenery, now one of those, eh, eh, organizations, eh, where they support the NPAA and the Ministry, but I'll do reforestation. Then recently, we also go on, another reforestation exercise, now Comfort Bridge, as well now, some of the community people have gone there to make sure, they carry on their responsibility. So therefore, where you will go to, you know, for help, under the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change, that, one, they say, police and soldier, then they go grab them. Where are the very police and soldier now, again, with the NPA, under the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change, that we do demolition, uh, demolition exercise, in the Western Area, the International Park. If you move, has been a success now, our activities is currently happening, yeah, wise and people here, and when you move towards the other areas, the movement concerned with, our next work of thought is going to be my training, and we know how my training, we know how the life of the woman down, when I want of the resources, where residents in the, uh, 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 Western Area, the National, National Park, that is being threatened, where you do not have success, where you not above, you see say, where we watch on the map, we go for map, you see say, the depression down will take all the part of the treatment center of the woman, and so the life or the sustenance of woman down is being threatened by our very activities. And as a result, let me pray crisis in town, where they say, place hot, place hot, not over the nature of poison, now we set set poison. Because what we give out, which is the water oxide, what is they are responsible for receiver, and they will be destroyed. And as we destroy them, automatically, we go for get a bad effect on us, and as we get a bad effect, believe you me, people here, come here, so they know they will stand, when the nature is unhealthy, and it's not happy, we do it. So so far so good, we are responsible for the protection of this particular ecosystem here, or the park, when I, the Western Area, National Park, and the other fourteen parks, eh, all over the country, this is just one of the parks, where you residents in, uh, Western Area, okay, Cambodians, we get the October, the Lili, we get the other parks, and where they, all other places in the country. So if I can talk so far, I will definitely restrict myself to the Western Area, the International Park, as to the reasons, the reasons why this particular reforestation will take place in West Forests, and why community people not a help, for definitely support the government, or protect the area. And finally, Mister Chairman, there was a day, who will be on demolition, uh, about, we wanted to definitely do our operations. The community young men and other elders mobilized, met effects, the NPAA and the military, because of the long building, and the protected area. That therefore, will hold the demolition exercise, your engagement, they will call it a chain, if you are here, please, make me the most, you there, because, uh, we will go for get an engagement, we will get constructive engagement, and tell us, eh, nobody is going to stop this demolition, and we will continue demolition after a longer successful. So maybe just demolish, poor, when a community, and they make sure, say, we sit up and engage with the community, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, uh, you don't hear it from, uh, my brother. Thank you very much, uh you don't hear you from my brother, originally doing at the institutions. Uh I mean, I don't know, I mean, I should say they do a fantastic job. Guys in terms of eh protecting the air they already probably protected. You know, one of the things that number we are the urge now. One of the things they want, yeah, they cancel now, before I cancel, this is Be too. In the camera, okay. Uh one of the things that number one urge, I mean, particularly we can't let demolition today. Uh even though we are supposed to do one, hmm, and it is guides. Now the guiding for the, we talk about protecting the areas and then protecting our environment. And all of the implications, particularly, uh there was a term where his excellency the president, they go now that that Guma also, and the areas and then and see the novel, the cannabis encouragement, they will be happy. And they need for protect them because otherwise, eh for the complaint about water, water, water business. But then the areas they were supposed to, they were generating the water that they would say they destroy. Uh I don't think say, we can continue for the complaint, if we say for not do we own bit. So I I mean, maybe it's such a kind of conversation, let people like the people that go demolish. I mean, once you get to my team, you wanna engage in community leaders, so that they know, you know, and then uh like able for go now, you know, say, thirty or forty, they should have the existence, so we follow on a do on a job. So uh I will take. N W R M A, and then there's a gentleman at the back, I did cut my own contribution into one, one minute, do you have it? You that gentleman, the glasses at the back, come forward. Uh I would, I get two female then, one at the back and and.
And deliberately, when we talk of the war, let where this western area, the International National Park, I stand up for me something very clear. I will start from who's having what thing. Say as a result of these human activities, we invite just to talk about. Hmm, don't leave you for me currently as we speak. Even just from the N P A, of very appropriate situation. Now we treat them as an exotic, that was all we can do. At this level of year, we're not for use much chemical. But we are mentioned now for me, we are not say, we use almost equal weight to we expect for use at A, at April. Now we use now as a result of two areas, so we suspect say, they read the cost from for now. I'm glad you mentioned the bubble. And demolition like a goal continued, but bubble and mango currently destroyed.
Yeah.
Currently as we speak, the abundance of dust, where it come, where it come inside this. It don't difficult now for me to manage the water. That are the low side of it all. This war there. When I remember what Mr. Lujan said, so that's a long way from the cities. It don't evolve to an extent, we try to add other facilities that within the city. Just so we will able for helping my fortune. Because if you want to a water project, you need ten times the money for develop an electricity project. I don't know from a salary time here. Now they do boom boom run, hmm? If you want to do something for water or fertile, as we speak, we need three point six billion dollars. Or maybe we implement the fertile wash master plan, we will just launch two years ago. Now that we need. Yesterday, I mean, the last day, probably Chinese, they were end of a giving a new facility that and more. Where they cover between emergency and ambulance. What is will be the total supply for the eh, that does three thousand cubic meters a day. In other words, we just get up for a little over fifteen thousand people there. Where at least we will manage. But the worst side of the animal and supply, they get two sources. This means that you go so productive, when we are the Chinese, they go and source them. As we speak, again, the group talks, we get a houseway overlook the way around. As we speak. The Ministry of Plants, we don't get up for twelve people, where they pay them. I call them, they will set the set to them, that for money. They set to them, they compensate the twelve people. Hmm, the project not be get up for that, because it ain't sorry to you. They bring out, we don't want no suppose for me. But they don't approach them, their people there, by the Ministry of Parks. The project we get for paying, they set to them, people here, what else can I do? I don't understand, as a result, we had two components who were for stop, who don't do. When to be washed, who does set to the water, your time. As we speak, one of them where as they go away. We get also the overlooker, now come and show that the effect of that. And then they talk for you now, and you talk for you, we are clear, shout square. We often not say the shout four, at this inside bypass. Eh like during the afternoon, we not go the shout four, also, people are the back of. There no one was having the four. Now after they learn the data, the supply people in the car in town. When I do surprise you now, we are not say, after the removal of the Oscar saddles from the 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 protected area, as a result of that more construction day. Eh, people are rush mobile, just as I made example say, we get house for the over. Um this the way, they all begin take the drain, toilet drain, the several that they wear. To an extent, since twenty twenty one, we stopped for use the water and shout. In other words, people they have around the Obugu area, up going towards Wellington, that area area. They all not they get water. Not, and not recently, where part of this master plan, what I tell you that soon. We have for, you need six million dollar, as a result of that, few of the way they do, just few of, when all it comes. We open six million dollars for me they can begin doing that in our entire system. That need they don't take after one year it's worked. So in other words, I am in town, therefore continuing. But so far for this water, the twenty twenty six. So for how long we continue this? Well, man, man can make a now very clear, we get ten dams for people. We get ten dams for people, the water yo, to eh 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 to think, to think by regions very close to Congo, eh eh, more give more give about ten. Yes, things, my essence is a means that they don't take the way. Yes, we don't do anything, this is real. Yes, things, cause so tall. We have gatting there, it is far. But I'm surprised by the end of next year, I don't know. Because I saw you know that place, you're taking your psychology. Look, and for construct, ten dams inside this one there. And make a make a clear for them, people that they think about your real. That sometimes I call a political project. I get this into that, we are professional, I don't want to in any, we'll take water from the value care. Boom bam, where extra, it need the decide for giving all the energy, you still know they do. That in other words, we want to fix up the road back out, just for hope that water. Yes. Because we need also fifty four megawatts from the design where they put the drop. And you will expect them to attack it for poor water, lots of power. You need to attack a pass come on, go care of that, a pass water, go put on, water, you know, we are not gonna be. Eh, Deputy Chairman, you go view for that.
Not possible. Yeah, so give the next one minute.
And for me, I don't know, we get A as a right now, we critical, my fortune. The part in the push to wash was it, mango, we did was it. Bubble, Sussex, Baja, eh eh number two, York, York, Regent, Bathurst. More give up, more tell is the bits. Secure. For all the areas here, I just want to tell us, they back improve the source that Alex down, after those. We don't stop for the shout, more give back, we don't propose right now, they don't rush to do it. And for booking number nine. So I go to that.
Thank you very much.
Very clear for all I don't exist, all they before.
Back to back. Thank you very much, so you see, I think uh I will give you other speakers then one, one minute, you are not lucky, but short, tight, sweet and happy. Yes, introduce yourself and then say what you want to say.
Hello, good afternoon, I'm here at I T O N G. Um I hope you create your presence, I wish you may actually be very strong. And and so we just speak as a way and just for the patient of climate change. And we we specifically to walk around climate, with our leadership. And one day, we can we just talk about water management, presenting. And there's Bobo, to be specific. We they do some intervention, we do two, two holders and creators that have talked with the support from the American Embassy, where we get our support for. And our organization actually the presenter. And we also did do a climate change advocacy versus the acting communities. And one of the communities, they were so unable and accurate. I can say this, that's not the minister there, and we get our environment specialists there. And Coco to be specific, our community, the one day we we work. Coco and our community, Laka, the number two. So we basically they work at our initiative, as you say. And if you go Coco, if you see how human activities, don't make how Coco long time. And this recent, we just have this one more. I I think the man there said, then ah ha, the man there, if you see how we activities there. That which that place be, you check there how we as they are in the seats of this, and we take a serious. And I tell nothing for one thing, where the the Minister and Environment don't do a very, very, very good job. Especially putting putting their policies and their document together. And that come to the question, where they did chairman, we think about I don't. I think eh the Venice did not develop the N C P, where the municipal device final version of the N C P, where the National Climate Change Policy. And the map, where the National Protection Plan, where the, for me, the N C P is just a framework, yeah? While the map, where the roadmap, I feel say, we need adoption and popularization and popularization of this document there so. That in communities there so. And you find out, when I go, I only communicate. You don't even know about N C P policies, you don't even know about the N P.
Noted, noted.
So I think say, the Venice and the environment especially say, we really want to this document, and come on the community there.
Noted, noted, I mean, I think say. I think at this point, all of them, now they say so. Uh we get we not take as they are the back, uh then they uh and they don't know stand on, eventually we will get, get a panget uh then feedback, then they in conversations, then they uh after the balance two panelists that on top, so uh just so we will do them, I mean, uh in good time, and make sure say, we will follow up everything, yes.
Uh good afternoon, everybody, all good course of sir.
You get one minute, sir.
Yes, uh here Christopher, I will refer full, and I will be the man with the submissions. Uh first of all, one for raise concern about Motome. All one thing say, first of all, if you go through the phone like how we check for the most stylistic places found within the Western area. And by one day, you will see Natabuama sanctuary, you will see places there all within the Western area. First point, one for some of the guys, if you know what Motome, just adjacent Motome. Yes, he say, right now, massive deforestation there. In fact, I'm one of the council officer, the poster picture they find recently for the organize councils. If you want to see, mass is over until like a thirteen acre of places on course that just adjacent eh Motomeo, near me. And then Sugarloaf, uh this to all the speakers that we talk, and I'll talk about Sugarloaf as one of the protected areas. And that now, indeed, is a protected area. We get a combination of something like seventeen acre of land, seventeen acres of land that has been deforested. And I want, I want to interject, um with the director of eh the P A. But it's like, when you go to those places, those authorities that were really supposed to protect everything. They actually pat night, the people, for you, you first, and they're very busy. And these are really very important. And you have a priority, you talk about the miners, or the miners, who tell you their power, their man, they're annoying you. It's very, very tragic. Then when it comes for work, the way they go, they're even there to carry, now selected work they go. There's a left place now here, they don't go and go go, that one or another. You know, this is another demolition, we want, we want complete demolition. All who sign host not for they, let it go. And that kind of way they go, compromise them, then we also want to, who's the man who embed the migration there? No, 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 they say that's they, that's they, that's they, but no, everyone know there is no sign the community tomorrow. And the man in the house, we know who's there, they're big guys there. We don't know, we need for that for government, then finally, then the government is involved. I don't think say that squash involvement with the government and the communities, that gap they need for the bridge.
Which is government involvement, what you mean, government involvement? Because government, there are many levels, local councils, national.
Local councils, they have choice, like for S C, I'd be interested to reject me. Like this day upon Jemaias, and they go in the valley. And you understand the process of regents, because most of these, that's why we have this, and allegiance happen. Also, man, all of that also go count like regents. But the community, most of these are, therefore, they will be sent in, they send in, they send in, the standard policy they come. Or when they come, or implements.
Thank you, thank you. So now just, now just say one thing very quickly before you go. Yeah, with regards to the green belts, you know, I mean, I don't know, I will forgive me, but I say differently. Uh the authorities, they get like what's on about, which inside the green belts, they, but I should say the fact that you raise her up, should say subconsciously, you know, say there should be a green belt somewhere. Nothing stops you, be part of that community day, for where go seek the information today. Lord, not just you know, and say, in this day and age, information are one way they go, eh? Is the responsibility of local council, but I can't go on a day, for me, you know, they're not out there, I said, no, not sad.
Five days for a community.
You do, you do both ways, which I, which I, which I make against the point, I want to encourage dialogue. Also in conversation, that's my point, now go to the next one, please.
Thank you very much.
Now, now you have with, you have a look at.
But they are very special aware.
Yeah.
The director for women's advocacy and agriculture and development organization. And also double as, this is for the director for women's work.
You get one minute, man.
Um I mean, you want to talk about the selective, just this evolution, they were around them and that. But again, I want for look at the role of the forest guards, where we all in reports. So why the money thing, when they do, that they wait until people they not build up before we see them, they can't demolish. We probably don't tell we, for the waterfall, when you so advancing national law. We be a see eh 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 eh, people that they go up there, and they pay for go to that water for late. Now we don't get the breaking news that that water fall don't be polluted. Moving out to Obugu, I want for better regard, I think we have a great. When they do that, that map, they go pull it back. The minister talk about important, why we come feed not the land for and God's law? No question they happen at the Guma Dam, after those best they deal before the election. When they go on that damn day, and they say all the people and they, they will be there soon. And unfortunately, for the power, what a poor man, they been arrested, eh? You see mansion, especially, that body man, they be there. So why they the next, they want to not build up, for now, we are not going to sell another six million dollars. For some of that was shallow, and then a lot to to Obugu, where you do cause, that Obugu they go pull it back. So for me, I see this as way of.
Thank you, noted. Uh we will take, we will take two more, and then I come to this Be too, and this is man. For the contribution, then in three minutes, and then we see how we will follow up this part of session.
So before I ask you, I want for, yeah, and mine and the we, they have to be prepared right now. And more where they might stand there. So how, how we go, they not forget, and while we say get down, they then people away. Now there are factors, where they, where they, where they affect the time, they don't it up. We go we pop, we go talk, we go down, but see, they are not in this group. It is not waste of time, because they don't want for you, they don't want for you. I advise you next time, we get a handout today, now we call people away, master. We don't say we can imagine a cheap way, and I will go pass on the next day to it. But then for there, for them, they say, no say, they work with the one way or the other, they affect me, and not only they affect the country. And I think that they just have sentiment, each, each what they talk about, or because of the life we move, therefore say, take how we want. They need for them to do, they have to know how, we don't they talk, we don't they, we don't they. They need for they not eat, they make them know how, we know they talk, we know they we know they dialogue, we know they advocate. One way or the other, they work their effect, so let them go to the town that they are, so just go 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 go, they just talk and go next. So they get a dialogue ready, let the people away master, they entire, we talk about smart mind. Let them say I give my mind, let them say they are making fire. Then I list it and then they will practice.
Thank you very much, but you know, I just I will say something, I will say something, I think uh. Well, I I I should say the minister also want for say, I mean, if you hold the mic right now. You see, the essence of this exercise, that for begin the dialogue. Hmm, uh, certain groups of people and they, you don't bring them all into a room once a once a, or begin for getting conversation in it. Eh, there are better ways than this in communications, you have to therefore slice and dice them, yeah? How you could be most effective, how is it going to be very effective, how it will be least effective? If you bring the one and they can and I can get a conversation, that tell you say. Uh, the impact and the effect will be different than we put them together, eh? One to one, could you ma could you, eyeball to eyeball, and get a hard, honest conversation and they away from other. So I think say that now the minister approach, but the essence, I for begin the conversation. Minister Jiwo, very deliberate in this approach today through the Ministry of Information and Civic Education, which is to start a dialogue. And this dialogue and this conversation, they reach now they very low steps and very little talk about, I can show you. Now go to the next possible, and it will be the last one and then.
I have a question, people. Any concern, maybe.
It's the most sign mind.
Um, I think um just the way the sister be saying, I start with that. And they say he who knows his feelings. And in community development studies, they start for more than the thing they affect before you get the better idea. For example, I want to what's aware that finish, they are not involved with community. And they was aware for waste, they go say, they are commenting your white one, so you please do anything. Um, so now go back to this, and to the Sanai, or the next one. Unless we go back to the least possible now, and we are beginner now, it's not about we. Where's the B A P, it's not about us, where the open accounts, you know, we invite you set. It's about some money, it's in which for the above every bit of person. Where go under the basis of respect of environmental, the work ethic. Tell us it is not about, because not everybody nationalist, they go can't, so go protect if we all, we put an important. But if you tell we low possibility, and environmental, or affect you, sickness and other. Eh, flood and the water, we don't go affect that, just now we it's a dog. Or even reject now you are get some, because if I there and that, not in dead place. That water, that road on way there, they can't say, which Motoka said, okay, for the, you have a case, you know, good man. So if we will tell, remember as I say, it's not only about national issue, maybe who want for the. Who want for monopolizer and monopolizer, so we say, tell us it has a personal defect. If rights are really not can find, they go affect plants sitting on the agriculture, we go make, we know okay, that's a full stop now, we can't see. You want more great man.
Thirty seconds.
So I say again, and I suggest that then we go back to release people there. The point of uh their forest stars, that the people they they block, they can't for the correct. The community, they, when they don't cause.
Fifteen seconds.
Go sleep, they don't they back the area, then they go see the positive. You see there, and they go all day they go. So and they make say, we thank, we got the.
Four, three, two, one. Thank you very much, thank you, thank you. Uh, now just also make another important point, minister for your attention. Uh, all of them groups, the way they mentioned, so they actually invite them, yeah? Uh, but I should say they don't come in large quantities, the all the Sanai groups and all of the. Formal invitation was extended to them, they didn't ask, so they are part of the conversation. The point far I make now that, this is an initial phase also. Minister, obviously, and in team now, the ministry therefore continue for get their conversations and they will, there's specific groups and they. Like this is just the general one, I will also. Right, so uh we return to presentation of their key messages there. Uh, by Lahai, Samba Keta, and I think now Julian Avandi, also. Julian Avandi now and also, and Lahai Samba Keta. So I will say after the messages there are, just for let the the temperature look and all small. Hmm, after the messages there are, my panelists there, White Chee, uh, and the teacher. My brother again, Mr. Ojas, then we therefore respond to some of them things that we, we come up. Because I think they will necessarily for let them say very quickly, uh 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 give some some response to all the issues of the world again. Because touch and concern institutions, the way that they represent. But that they will be after them, presentation of their key messages there. So uh over to you, Julian Avandi, and.
Hello, hello, hello. Okay, um, Mambulden, um, morning, it's not morning or afternoon. Um, afternoon, morning, good minister, um, the members of the panel, um, all invited here. Um, we happy for there to be, we analyze our data. Um, this whole idea there, it was born out of the minister in view. That um, western area peninsula is very, very important, is very critical for me, for the survival to be there, now we talk. So if we really want to make, there we just go before now we talk. We for talk about how for protect the western area of the peninsula. It for be like a song, it for there that all man in bed. When you work as a, and say the work I for loop up here, and that way see, tip they do up there. When you tell me there, you see tip they do up western area peninsula, for be happy. Because that tip they there and they protect where they go. Then disaster, the way they see, if that tip they not there, eh, every day we get, every day you see. When do we talk, like a change, we see ah, and this now just a beginning. We can all see this year July, from fourth of July, then that first, now read no more. Like a change of the picture. So now he make this campaign, we minister say, we take that for all man in those there. Now, we talk, those of we talk no more, we get a no nine. All man for those here, we teach they won't get, they get rule. So now he make we give a developers program, you say, okay, one developers program. Before see what they do, we forget message together. So we detect it a different, whether at the ministry, we come together. Now we think, we should all think, we say, how we want to make this message? How we make the people to understand this message, what you want for them to play? Now, master, some people they not for strong, and look at the ones they go to prepare. So first of all, what to do, would really expect that we develop the message there. We develop the message there, and the message there we so develop. First, we want for them to know, waiting now the western area peninsula. Now, if you sure to get there, the western area peninsula occupy about eighteen thousand hectares of land. Up here, that way they draw, or the original one, they don't go to the land. We know, we don't play no more, so I'm the boss, boss, if you look at that area, next thousand there. Now, this peninsula, now one of the X, by the Dallas, and it don't give. So the only, I don't know, the world of Africa, here amongst eight, he now one of them. So it very important, and he will find there and we say, with the monitor, it very difficult to me. The western area peninsula, yes, one water road there, sixty one. We look at all over, now sixty one they give, where they come off, where water go, type in the past part, now sixty one, project the all. Out of there sixty one they make, only sixty one, and only four, four of them no more, and they provide water for you. Now we talk four, only water we get from four there, we less see high critical. Now, those who know more, speak, people say, we talk there, we get almost one million people there. All man at that four, but aside it's in there. So anything happen to that, eh, engineer from, what you say, the doctor. That go get, in a pipe, on in a long time, see, we don't really think about that now. But why if you get water, we have to contact water, you then go to the camp, oh, no, use that, we must spend, go come money, go come make. Eh, long, you go to the water, that money no go to the water side, if you all money go to the water, those contact and you take, next slide me.
Would I do the slide?
Okay, hold on. Um, the tour of George. So what you reply for say, the importance of western area peninsula.
Slide and book order me.
So we have to, we for protect that. Now, if we look at the western area peninsula park. We get what we call the green perspective, now there one they they, and they should say, we get the water, what we supposed to get?
That, hold Julian, hold Julian.
I'm in my shoe. You know.
No, no, I technology, I don't feel that, it's another good. Come, you just want to talk to.
And what you will find out, now, we expand there, they get so much interest our western area peninsula. That they they are that the monitor, they will get out in a corner. Asset impact monitoring from space, and a program, one program, the very big, and they do every year. So they not know assessment, every year, don't find out, waiting the half of the year. Now, this year no more, this year the boundary from January to April. The number of hectare.
Okay, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go down, whatever, whatever, we're gonna go, we're gonna go in five minutes.
Five hundred and fifty hectare.
Go to the slides and speak to the main points.
We get eighteen thousand hectares. Run back, run for five hundred fifty acres, I mean. So and they predict say, if we continue in this kind of way, before twenty forty. We will, we will, we are even half of the rest of the peninsula. We don't move. So because of that.
Hold the mic, no.
We need or they wanna understand the message.
Hmm.
Okay. Let's go go, go go first, go go first, go go, go go, get this. Now, we gather all this information, put them together, now pass over to the people there, where we must have some people there, where they have a communication. So we must have some people there, now they say, change up, into what say, where the man, where anybody there that goes for understand that. So now we go into the west system now, or they wanna understand, really, what you can't talk. So I go hand over to the master, so we can outreach, or we can continue the message system, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mambulden. Good afternoon, that be very good. Well, um, we go speak to the key messages, because we all, from the panel discussion and interaction, I would say, we know what is a problem. We know what is the cost of them, kind of disasters there, we put together. So now, we start and people them, this message is the way we all get particular, we got it is there. I notice they the Sanai and Stone Miners and whoever, where they ask for a no gap, because. They see they all, we wait say, they give up a bit. Or this engagement, our assurance, but he say, now for them we can, if you don't say, this Sanai, you are there, you. You, you all like you, what do you feel say, government and other partners for do? For then you say, eh, we tap for, then back at the airway, they cause problem and we are bad. So I notice they nobody not doing grab, now they end there, they say, no, man, I miss you, I miss you. But that is it, now the message there, and I'm very important for we all. How we for protect your government, I don't say, we, we put there, where they understand for we this. And I think they know where we put together. One, we for let for both store, and then they see that area there, so that we will save the community and save freedom. Because we see pictures there, people that way we know reject and other areas, so they don't let this reject the day initially. Say around battles, and place where we have green environment, but now we show it to them, and this I think where they are going. And as same, when we return for the other, I've seen the old top saying, not for cutting, or building, now we have catchment area. And then we talk say, you know, for set fire, now we forest and reserve area there. We also talk say, if we stop it in the airway, in a call, make we not fun, now we forest reserve area there. And not bull sand sand, and we reach there, so we will save the community there, we also wait up on our car. Let me go first, and then we talk about we water, where we the cost man go for my fish. We where they go on reach, they all aside there, we know how this they affect you. And we don't say exactly, if you shamanic go for anything there, and then use up for my. Then, we see this picture, we where the social media, we see this descent, letting happen on our car. This now one of the disaster, where happen on our car, and we say again, make we save, we reach there, and save the community. So let me let for bull sand sand, and we reach there, make we not lose the community there. Because if we continue for bull sand sand, and we reach there, especially, the one way people that we don't go mean that, so. All that focus, whatever, we lost the community there. People away, we don't leave now, Laka, always a zero to the first Laka, that's. Lahai.
Yes. Welcome you, um, the normal voice for doing, as we see, I can't make a reference. Why should they do this, I will read from here and explain, and so that we go, now we stop at all.
You don't come?
And I see this of course, for people with life, if they see that, we collect some of the life, or custom. And that can be do because, um, we need for.
Seriously, come.
How should we very.
Cancel, not doing extension, this is not general.
We need for protect the forest and protect.
Not this, not the push.
How we go do this, where we plant water? Interestingly, last week, where we eh plant this program, we go, and number two is our for congratulation. We meet young people there, who man they they plant this there, so we fortunately protect the pictures there. So number two, in German there, we are taking, and this now one say where, our message, okay, what are we coming? Let me say, we forest and protect, protect we forest and protect we community there. If you plant one tree today, you have protect tomorrow. And then, we also say, water man, need the tick then, plant one today and save tomorrow. We the water man, we need the tick then, tick then they do so much for we, then they live oxygen, where they make their whole breathe. Pick them now, and someone they all the water, the water, and gone so that we get more water, and we community there. Pick them also, now they, they are the all the doctor, for a boy, make we not get land, eh, destroy the ocean. When it does, so they throw their whole, eh, come for them, and people them, and they host them, and destroy them. At the same time, we talk about, um, how we for protect the water catchment area there. We say, let, I say for message, we say, let we protect, we water catchment area there. Water now light, let me respect the green belt. When the combination mode we get, now, the player say people them, know who side the green belts. The, I'm sorry, people there, they talk about who side the green belts, and people there, yes, from some say, some no more who side it there. And some no side it there, that's how one of the easy we make, they are. Some say people there no more where they. So we, if they say here, and what you come from, we go no one for, and just say, who are no more, no say, now you are there, that's now you are there. We also say, let me know. Or make.
I don't think it's extension.
Water catchment area there, when we go to the water catchment area there now, we go see say, people they not build up, and most of they go without toilet. They go on big toilet, and we know water is not too much of a. And if the water, now you respect say, you come, you get a staff, the community there and we come. Now, this same water, we the pour. And if the water, now we respect say, we can't, we get a staff, the community there, and free from, now the same water, we the protect the community. Not say the, oh, we are aware of it. Especially the city, who say they get water from that particular source. So, we need for, and just say, we protect the water catchment area, not be close, say, not only for make farm, because the season, and then they expect that we get more water, more feed, more water on the community. And then, we also talk say, the message here, we say, what we develop farm, let me not block water well. If you block water, water protect you not. That may, you know, we know that we village is region, it testify that, other communities there, where people are not make sand, yes, go make big big foundation, and put those on top there, they not anything water protect there, where they make up. So, if you block water, water protect you not. And if you be, you, we also talk say, we must not abandon, here we not be, there, here we be close, our one line. How? For that not be like this. Because you go, people say, because people find so long as they in inside. Because the family disaster, you are sight, definitely they are happy. Everybody and most time, directly out, nah, nah, eh, who are they? So many people that have a one thousand, where some man, where he was found, because some man, he didn't leave, they go see it. So you know, we who know it, together, you know that. So that kind of situation, we not want that. This is the message to protect the community. If you are, let me say, we are, we should environment, we will bring them, we hope, make sure say, let me say, we are, we are take a post on the community there. And make sure so, we are say, engage with you, before that young man there, the few, four miners, sand miners, and then the, the stone miners there. Let me say, they understand, we say, we must stop them, because of them, they are there. And then, we see this.
No, that's okay, not do that, that's all, so now fix that.
Because of we are clearly know the process, the recovery there, it affect.
What do I want there?
So much that the animals, they all be there.
To not it's up.
Our there, people there, we don't make that pizza, we don't do that class from, we just end, from nineteen eighty-five. How, how well naturally, water flying out, they fly, fly, promote them, like I did before. They not there too, too much again, compared to what you see, how, where the forest them, they, who should they, so that same way, we the play my mother, so they see monkey, then they come around, but they, all are school, and they go on. Now, we not exist in there, because how we the protect it, now so if we, 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 animals, they go away. And then animals there, and now we all get there. You are even say, this now we want protect them. Then, they also they, can we say, we all for them to live here. So, that's next way we want for us, so we go first, first, speak there, now they, the animal there, they be, they say, they want. I don't even say, first, it has.
You come?
You go blood, then you go star one. And let all my salute, let's say, we don't do, then we not make their energy.
You come?
And that's then say, they say. And then, I want for tell now, all twenty seventy, for where we make attention. So this why, here we just, take and show people, and let's see, let's take this failure in representation. But we don't say, this particular presentation, we also for trying to control, please, they will, please, they for good story. Oh, this message here, clear for now, for home, it has for the community there as well. And thank you, welcome.
A lot of clap for Julian, I don't know. I tell you now, thank you for where we are done, though three since the start of this program, up until now, as I've been said to now, uh, there are a lot of feedbacks and questions that we come from the audience. Where I think say, we will now give an opportunity to the panelists them. And in the process, we will also make the village man a graft team, Mrs. Bean too, as part of the closing cut seat. Therefore, we say two, three team then, based on all of what you know, on, on, unfold now, so today. But right now, uh, was in the trial for make sure say, Mike and all think count, uh, I go invite. I forgot. I go ask the minister. Well, look like the life one, they come back too much more. I've asked the minister, uh, for let he take the stand, and respond to some of their questions and comments that we come, but then also, I think say, we use as an opportunity now for give you your remarks in the process. Honorable Minister. Well, you see, we, we person get blessing alive, we don't have talked to, the Mike not come, we the minister for talking no more now, eh, now not get a night. Uh-huh, Honorable Minister.
Thank you very much. Um, firstly, I would like to tell all the one that we, we come up and, um, and make them contribution then, um. I think the, the, the passion where people then show, is very important to this, talk here, who they talk, because this is not family talk. If people not care, they not come, or can't talk, which they not they mind. And I appreciate that people then come, they talk which they not they mind. I want for, just to respond to some of them, uh, concerns here, or issues that we people there is, and then I go hand over to the other people that are the panel. Um, so Chief Young, we talk about D F O's and foresters. Uh, I don't know if he's still, still here, alright. Um, so, D F O's they still there, foresters they still there. We forest them, we get different kinds of foresters. Uh, you get in protected areas then, when, uh, like Western Asia Peninsula, so, with, um, parliament, passed law, say, yeah, nah, no go area, you can't do such in the inside there. As part of that law, they don't demarcate them, say, this part here, no, such activities then they, we, we water man not for do they. Uh, then one in the, the protected areas, then at N P A, they look over them. You get forest results, you get community forest, you get different categories of forest. Uh, the forest, the D F O's then way in the top box, then they report to the forestry department, which is done, inside the Ministry of the Environment. Uh, but it's still every single district, now this country here, uh, get D F O's. So that we saw something happen in a different part of the country there. Uh, for example, when I see picture of, of lepets, a few, like, I think last month, we, they say, now kill, they kill them. Um, but leopard, they go fashion inside trap. Uh, what's, what's like that happened, now the D F O that we can say, uh, for go investigate, talk to community people there. But the D F O's then, they sit down really, now the district then, for, uh, promote the policies of the, of the ministry or of the government, then they work, thinking then at the council, then they work directly with the council. So they still they, they get their foresters then, uh, just as N P A, self get their own foresters then, with the, uh, patrol the protected areas then. Um. One or two, uh, people that make contribution, talk about foresters them, how effective, or somebody talk about N P A being complicit. If anybody know of any foresters, for a stranger, where they sell land, we are giving right information, they come in the Ministry of the Environment. Not to the work that they. They work, now for protect and guard the protected areas, then they, for make sure say, illegal activity not they happen. If we are catch them, they sell land, uh, we are being the evidence scam, and we go prosecute them. Because that clearly means that you work there, where the, where the government send their property, they not understand that they, now they own business, then they go back. So I can just assure, I can assure, I say, any, if, when I give evidence of any, uh, and because it's I think why don't they, but we have a question. And every time I go out with the Rangers, or the, the leadership of N P A, and they tell them say, and they wait for that first one or two number who they H O G. Because then they go send a strong message to the other one there, where they engage in the sale of land, where they know clearly say, not to the work that they.
So what was this supposed to actually?
Uh, the Deputy Chair talk about different laws. Uh, sometimes, you know, we get laws that way they conflict, but, uh, in many cases, uh, the laws are clear. When you say protected area, it clear say, certain activities not for do they. And protected area, not, you know, just not normally you announce it, in a protected area. Minister, they go lay down, and they, they go lay document, and parliament say, this area, for this particular boundary, don't designate as protected area, and parliament, now they pass and say, not protected area. Once that it don't happen, um, Ministry of Lands, or, or nobody can't engage in certain activities. And the law is very clear, a lot of them documents there, we, now public information, one don't say, act for let people then see, for him for access them. The Ministry of Environment, they work on a website, where hopefully, we will get them up, you know, in the next few months. We will put all the information there, so people will get easy access to that. Um, but protected area, not a place for go sell. That they are, I want to have a little that. Um. The water supply, engineer coma, talk body issues to water supply. I would say people then really be the listen to that they, like, people be the listening keenly, because that is when they affect all man there. Now, you know, say, on our government's business, no. With all there, we depend on, um, water, every day for live, now Western area. We all for be concerned about the issues where engineer coma is. Um, because clearly, if community people, um, think say, well, if they go cut the tick, that it not affect me, um. It, it's important for them to listen to what engineer coma say, because the water supply, you know, it decrease. If woman don't plan for invest in all places across the Western Asia Peninsula, so that more people will get access to water, not so woman one who can that. Important for them, all the people then, now the Western area, ensure, say, their areas and they, where supposed to be no go area, people not go there. Now, what I mean by that, you know, it means say, you the aidman, or you the councillor, or you get way for escalate some of their issues that they, to the council. The council get direct line to the ministry. Until we all able for work together, and act for solve them problem there, or if we all, take the ownership, and if we all think of this as problem, when we all help us solve, um, we all keep play, we own, we own small part. If you in a community, you see that they brush, you, you escalate that there, then action for they. The person which talk about Shivalo, Shivalo now no go area. Shivalo there inside the, the, the Western Asia Peninsula National Park. So if you see possibly the brush, they possibly the bill goes there, um, now for use the channels, aidman, councillor, council, and then they go come up to the ministry. One of the, I mean, the biggest problem we don't get over the years, as many of them I don't talk about, now enforcement. Um, and enforcement, you know, it's also now resource issue, because for enforcement, you need resource. But who tell this possibly bill goes, when they send force, when I stop this goes, you go, you put sign, you go, you put X, it's still a bill goes. Now, we don't get inside now, we don't, you know, when the ministry say, now gets the resource, we escalate onto the presidency. I mean, when I see so German now, with, with machinery for go goes. And when they come by enforcement, the ministry determine for secure resource then, so that that enforcement action they go continue. Because if you don't have one, one month, you left them, people then they come back. So, the ministry determine for do continuous enforcement. And enforcement, they only work with a uniform, enforcement not for watch face. Um, if I hear somebody say, now selective enforcement, will they, will they do, they are, if you get evidence of that they raise up. Uh, I don't say some enforcement action, where we the work with N D M A, um, and, and some enforcement action beyond the regions, a few weeks ago, um, that, we not be for, just clear that water go there. Because people they go, I mean, Sagon are the only place, person they see say, when this now water go, they go build inside. Then where the water come, you say, Papa Government, it's got empty. Where you don't go build that water, you not just not endanger you and your family, you not endanger the entire community. Because when the flooding, they come, now your entire community, they suffer. You know, so now one of the things they make, they talk, and they plead and beg, or now, already now, let the world go back, who now go now, now community there, where you see that kind of thing, now for use I want it. And governments, good, they try for get resource there, so, but who next, they, as she is here, do the weapon. As she is here, do the weapon, as she is here, so that you know, go get to a point where possibly they be, they be goes. Uh, but the enforcement, as far as we concerned, enough for watch face. The green belt boundary, I mean, I think most people will say the green belt boundary, but if you don't know, for, for you own, they can say, eh, better safe than sorry, if you come off from, uh, let's say, Hamilton, you de come out of, anything to the left, not be made. Um, that is not the safe way to say, the actual boundary, we go try for fair way for make that they accessible to all man. Because again, now, now, now parliament passed that law there, we get all the coordinates, you get the entire boundary, make it on our phone. So that if you don't put on your phone, where you see your mass inside the boundary, you go know, where you come out of the boundary, you go know. Um, I think the other one then, you know, the sand mining, the, um, we, M C now, I don't already address that, yes, we got some sand miner there, but, it not look like this environment, because you see, for let people, they hit their hands, and then they, and then they mine the sand, so we find way for go meet then, and San San go on.
Yeah.
Let we, let we, let we continue this conversation, yeah, now begin no more begin, this material, we go for they continue, uh, until we get the desired resource. I will stop there for now, um, popularization of the ministry's policies, I think that's a very good, a very good idea, that they. Uh, again, this now it starts, you know, we can't for can't talk to, to now, we, the ministry, you know, now our government, we get. So the ministry, they work through the Ministry of Information and Civil Aviation, for popularize a lot of them here, so that all man, not just the Western area, but all man across the country, uh, go understand their policy here. So I'll stop there for now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Minister, so I should say all of them, feedback the question that they come, the minister don't deal with the exhaust TV, uh, which I will now do, uh, we get Mrs. Bean to now, I will get the village man a grafting. Instead, they will do in a part of the, then said in the panel, we not be doing here if from there, right? So then say, go feed into all of within the, and probably bring their unique perspective. So, uh, Mrs. Bean too, over to you, uh, let you say, uh, argue two minutes, and the balance one minute for round off.
Alright, thank you so much, and appreciate that. Honorable Minister, honorable Minister, sure after that, um, members of the high table, I want to stand on the existing vote of this. Um, before I go for that, also want to say, thank you for the Minister and Minister of, Minister of Ministry of Environment and Information, and Civic Education, for knowing and making this occasion possible, because we've been there with a struggle of what, how can we do it? Information can't be able coordinated, and for whom, I want to say, the thank you, before I start. And me and me to most serious, me and the project manager for the sustainable and integrated and management of the area nation, and Peninsula Park, we are a six-year project, it was started last year, and we then, uh, the B M U, within our Ministry of Environment and the Houses Project, because our environment project is another food. Whatever we do, we are contributing to the government effort. So, now the CHS Project, Global Environmental Facility, and we have been and ready for me, I want to acknowledge that, um. We they work with different partners, there are six partners, we all know, you have to be, things that when it don't happen, we the hope, N P A, P A, T A, G R A V A, um, E S A, Oneless, the Ministry of Plants. Whatever we do, we don't say, Western Asia Peninsula, it don't be a problem. One of the major problems, now the forestation, and the forestation, that causes lots of problems, the whole world is see. One of the major problems, now deforestation, and deforestation, that cause a lot of problems, the whole world is see. So now he make, because some men are able to do everything, they don't know say, you just put small, small money, they not go go also touch everything. Now he make this money there, so maybe we have the Ministry of Environment, whatever on environment area, but just limited now western area that they start project, now that is the effort. So what you then, think then, both they look at under the project, we get some look at policy reviews. Uh, we know say so long, the policies that we don't change, okay, lots of them already goes in this time, we don't say there not be an act, who has to push under this project, because when you have also to do something, you need to get that power. And what you go give you power, now for me, you know say, yeah, the policies there, when you go to your parliament, say, don't give you power. So say this, I will do this now, if you not do this, I will do this. So the project gets supports that. And the project get to support also, we know say, the forest and the land, you know, it, it, it really, really there in some time way. But the project they contribute for, restore two thousand hectare, now the upland, when the forest came, we have the work with ESA on that. We they also work with NBAA, so many have restored two thousand hectare of mangrove land. We know say, we, we start with forest, not a risk. You know, from primary school, we have this relationship between the, the plant and us, so we get some restore that. For me, the insurance for the environment come back, otherwise, I simply, next year, we come in dry season, we all get some stuff back. We get some restore the two thousand hectare of mangrove, because we know say mangrove also like a very good carbon sink. They, they be very good, so they went work with EPA for two thirty. We they start source and allowance banking, if all man go that averding quick, a lot of encouragement on there. So we they work with them, they don't start, and they start with community engagement. Many communities, they also sign and emote with them, say, this area, you can't go beyond this area. So now that they don't start. Um, under this project also, we get some, one of, say, I mean, this, I will next raise in a knowledge management. Many people then, because sometimes it involve your problem, but if you are not aware of your problem, maybe you can't take corrective actions. Let you know what is happening in your environment, we get some of. And also, maybe if they say, let's all mine me, let's start mine, I beg please, I just want to go small. I completed project, who I did when, when I go start project, we support Laka and Harvati. Now, it very, very, for me, I felt like, what is happening? I just come from all the last year, we been massive, um, community center, now Harvati, so many people they do training. So what is happening? Why this, you know, this sand mining? Just to stop sand mining, because that project, you know, you can't look at sand mining. But I think that as we come up, we are not at the, the, the hope, that's the end. And we buy equipment then, skins, what you like this, they do that, and just previous project, for stock. And also, we do a, a big hall, by that, for my, the, the micro thing, for bricks making. We work with Ministry of Field, for do that. So a lot of things that not be happen. But once the evidence, one will also stop at, you know, with project, what project come, government, government, that is the same thing. We don't get see pressure. So we don't come, and the minister say, yes, this is awareness, let, let we talk so now. Because maybe where, maybe if there someone show the video, oh, now all the people see they happen. So please, this now just awareness bringing, the project gets also the like they do support, or they was with one expert. Because if you say stop me, stone mine, that's your value, from the beginning something. Who has to see, at the end of the day, all their support there, within six years, many western area, when it's like, come back, to help in the way, so that the way we will return, I want, I tell them that.
Uh, let's back to the other panelists then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, without saying no. Um, Mr. Chairman, I believe say this thing, don't say we, we, we conquer that, or protect the environment. Um, people in the pride, the village heads there now, but the village is there, I'm not sure if they're getting it, the guy panics. Because they just live like the picture. No check the western area, who's pass the way, lands they not be. None of the children will land, not be. Lands they can't, they can't take land there, and shape shape to people there. They forget say, the people are in the community, they get down there. Mr. Minister, I will shout for say, yesterday, I get call for the, his award, made the city say, because in city say, he get offer letter, imagine, convince the savwa, possibly they offer letter for her. So who say they offer letter, they come on, and the land ministry, that they come on. So like the, a man then achieve, the community people in a part, they do for the, so we say they are wrong there. Because they not recognize me, and they come on our office, they can't have the community, now what they do for them, we do. Now we ask the game, my day, who said, and then last, they can't have the community, who they, who they may inform, I say, we can't on our community for can do so so. None, and when they stop, they before only they look in that cell, I'm not answering on the way they look in that cell, for one. So then, if you will talk, Mr. Minister, please, I mean, sir, when I go back, when I look you know, when I put a hand in in place, and they say to adopt them, for community, don't like the community. If you are do that day, in one day or one second, this thing is all, we have a bit of practice there. But for one time, we the same people, they, they last, they can't say we have a book, or they speak, and they, they shame on the people there, everybody shame on. Then they say, they say, yeah, now for, um, now for, I go on, for, then all our facilities, they know, like that, all our, like that, people that they talk for say, we not have any degree. And in this way, they are not agree with it, Mr. Minister. Like we now, I will tell you now, maybe the next two months, three months, we then they move. Because not to say our community people then move, now the Ministry of Land, they can't and shame on that day. So if we don't talk, then they look in that cell, and we then the family, they all are evacuate the family, they all are treat them, the community people, they get family. And then they look there, and so they try to expose them, so it is clear. So if we like to have a tiny power, from our is go play, it is, it's, I mean, sir, one day, they will know for what protect this day. But we say we have, we have two people there, the community is around now, they have land where they show you. Now say, over, over fifty year can now, now three, now three, then he said, for both brush they place. So they shame on that day. Understand, like we know they not say, not say we not just, so they from now on, we,
Supposed to have a forget land, I be score. That should be the objective. Charlie, they do some draw. Honorable ministers on lotto. Where they okada rider, then keke rider, all extended their clear land. After one day for by land, two million in my name. Not get money, not did eh? Man, so mustn't defend to keke on okada. Then set get, then set get supposed to get your opportunity. This comes who the legal house alone, whoever for by land. So, you know, uh. I, I hope this something they demand is that we make commitments. Now, no, soon I mean, they plan to buy his own asset going forward. It will be very, very cool as part of this conversation. That was us. Yeah, so, I, I mean, I take three more feedback from the group, Maya. And then the balance panelists are now. Cancel of that, uh, you deputy chairman, uh, Beshel journalist, you are a good. Blogger, so. Now, if you didn't this, this blogger lady, now they wrap up. The comments are now from the audience and they will come to the remaining panelists now for getting a final award. Uh, cancel up. Where you? In one minutes, so not do prayer book, not do, where they call, just go straight to the table. Quick, quick, sharp, sharp.
Thank you very much, um, we appreciate the ministry of, uh. The government to help me to establish a foundation for this initiative. Uh, we'll talk about, uh. We protected areas. One of the thing we need one for exercise on there. And that we're not forgotten a country on a project this. Uh, we see I mean by that. We protected areas and I wish I could protect them. We, the man just be talking that say, uh, the whole, stay cool there and arrest them. The power they don't give you on the authority for in a local area. Only they allow for exercise. When the ministry of lands, they can't have a locality, we are not in problem. Uh, the ministry of environment. For example, we wanna talk about the sugar love area. How many of we ministers or directors, we are in the visiting protected areas there? And from afar, we know this here. But most of them not visit. We are in the sugar love every year, they get the, so the setting of, uh, April or March of code. We go and see the actuality happen inside today. Or, now on a man, on a the same, the protected start. But who not feel that they, oh, now he probably think they happen. We not think now he say, stay cool as a canceler or, uh, the man they don't even plan like we say so. What's the key come around here? Now, we did it in a community, she man come on a land. They got a million of loans, they go, they say she know. Man, they should know who can they go. He said they go, he said, he said, he said, he said, ah, oh. The only thing we think correct, we said, oh, they can't put them in our locality there. Then the guy things happen. But we, now we say, well, I will tell you, last week, the deputy chairman, the ministry of lands, they can't have. We don't consider, we don't plan to get a half of protect. Or half of reserve, all their documents landed. Until we start a meeting today. So, we are consider they happen in all the ministries of the party. And it's not only in the locality, we not can engage with the country, not to the lost thing.
Thank you.
Not to pass, we just see things they happen in our community, so we will leave her.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, uh, who done at the next one? No, 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 I, no, not to be used, sir. Not to be used, I would refer. Now, this journalist have been called. You not from us side? Eh, you not from us side?
Anything.
We're doing inside thirty seconds. You not say anything, which you are possibly don't talk, not to show, that's something new you want for say?
Person is sand mining.
Eh?
It's sand mining.
You guess something new, but sand mining, you want top four, who not be the, you already there, yeah?
I am both yes to it.
No, not both yes, not both yes. Say something, no, 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 no.
Bet in, we say, uh, it's all possible.
You not, you not get the opportunity, at the cancer. Now, me, now me, now me, they run this program, sir, only he say so.
Thank you very much.
You not go get the opportunity for both yes. You say something new, yeah?
No problem.
Thank you.
On a good after, new name, uh, my it has no for high we be on. Um, I just want say something, we, we all know the pizza. We, if you look at the sustainable development rules, we are the S G. Where the long, it's a quarter, twenty thirty.
Uh huh.
It's all over, I guess, Papa, client kitchen, we on our food.
Hmm.
How we would want? Now, you don't look at the forest, we don't know say, we can't see. Look at time, it's a moment I already use for me to. When that water they calm down, they destroy. Even if you not minister, you not so called, order it be. You never think on the people there. Now, we all know say, we a blame this, we a blame government, we a blame, uh, cheese. We all get the responsibility as say, you know, for protect we say. And once me, when you look at the forests. From here, you see, first of all, you see, please, they, they not go. Because everybody don't bring anybody surround only those. You not so far for those. You know, also all man, they become gentleman. It also all, they become gentleman, expect of you. So, we some of figure what they want, we not get those we get from the rest. So, you not think you say because of, and you get those, you know, they protect that place too. So, there, we a pay as a numerous. Then we less for the place, they not who place, we go there by reset twenty, twenty fifty, twenty sixty. We just go count with solution, when we see say, we not say, when you see in order, you say you not say, you know, whoever.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Uh, Beshel?
Yes, uh, a question to look to, uh, deputy chairman, or, or to look, uh, who are these things, I'm sorry. Uh, when you look at the dump inside over there. They never put up massive pain in the name, what we say, they let it coach into that dump, I stand to be corrected. We get, for some of them, only one dump inside. Uh, also, when I move back of this day, I see garbage trucks and family, dust crap and waste like on. There was a lot of a big community. What we say, the issue of dumping, uh, dump inside, I challenge you now. Garbage collection, I challenge you now. So, we question you, how serious is the council? A garbage collection, in this matter?
Yes, thank you very much. One other question there, and within the brother, the journalist just don't talk down. Don't joke me mind, I will ask deputy chairman, one additional question, and this is a public interest question. In addition to them trucks, they also see packs, so, I also not say, I see this school bus, the pack. Is it functional, is it work? If you take the kid there twelve from school? Because not forget, say, these are the ball functions, so. Where they be take their school buses there, every single local council. Now, they get responsibility for them buses there, for make sure that they take the kid there. From point A to point B, to school in the morning and after school, so maybe if you don't add on the two, the other question is there. And I think say, now don't stop for now, uh, eh? Yes, sir. No, but you don't talk, which you want say?
Uh, uh, just, uh, by holy foundation.
Yes, sir.
I most, most, most like, uh, to be this one, uh, boss.
Hmm hmm.
The fourteen and the twenty-four. At the same, eh, eh, our government, they para locate land, they, they para, uh, give people a land now, where they take their land in the, uh, uh, uh. Land just.
Uh huh.
And I, they, they don't see, don't call, they don't come, very close to the side of side of the body.
Okay.
So, I, I only want, so, they, they not know that, because people, uh, all they know, they not talk, that's what they not talk.
Ah, is that, not it, thank you. So, I will count now, uh, I want to be first, no, uh, uh, deputy chair. You not yet free. You will be second to last, now, if you talk, minister gave closing courses. Uh, Sally Alaa Muhammad, and I don't see who who. So, right. I will give you two minutes, you know, say there are some previous questions there. And then additional one there, if there's anything you want for say. Uh, in response to them, then comment and, and issues that they gave. But then also, you are in closing courses now in one minute. So, you will one minute thirty seconds.
Thank you very much. Um, the questions that will have been asked, I think say, memorable minister. They don't answer all of them questions today. Or something the way I want to bring that. So, their questions. People are saying, we ready as ready as. Do you have any comments about Maya? When they been at this ball? Or say, this particular zoo, this way that we your boy, I have, now he be saying, I give this Mr. A or Mr. B, he's a long time director. That one, blah, blah, there we go. And two. Then we get there, we get evidences of community. People, they attack the rangers and, where they go away at the site, who sign out the present area. We can then report the little police, we get evidences today. So, if when they say rangers, and they say land, and they say this, it don't vary manner. Or say, ministry of lands, ministry of lands, ministry of lands. We N P A, we a fight with ministry of lands, I feel. We N P A, we fight with community, they jump there, I feel. They are, they jump there at this ball, and I will call you, but they play themselves. Where they approach N P A, they say then, come on, they jump there. Don't say, oh, you learn the way of a man so see, but say that, they make at this ball. You know? So, not say they say, on what account, N P A, don't go and meet in a certain community, I thought it about. Where they meet in a, I thought it will, they jump there, the public people. But say they say, we are not employed into the protected area, we are one of the people that they not do. Recent day, if they jump off my society, see how. If not, I will inform a agent, wait there go, that appear at the protected area, they want that they are police station. They preparing people, now they back door, they say, no, now form a agent, now form this, now form that. We seize the, uh, battery. Guess what happened? They take over another battery, they go pull the, that apply inside the machine, they form a agent. When the police say they call, they say, it is personal, you know, the body. Before, the agent there, oh, my doctor, he will answer that question, and he's a living witness. So, I think say, we need to talk of collaboration. We amongst everywhere, we get cases of deforestation, now, all the morning, public people, they go in forest. Next in the evening, they go in forest. We not expect the rangers, we did a big, and then, because we not they ask, there is a witness, or that protect this. So, I'm going to say about N P A, we are putting our best, for the representative. So, therefore, I want to let this media, as Minister of legging is started, that will continue for a day. For demolition, everybody bring out documents or evidence, or say we just select.
Thank you.
Uh, 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 demolition. Musa, you understand right now, there are two structures inside your salary. With the, with the demolition, this morning, I recall that, as them to house, they are, because they like that your salary. So, we continue for parry, the mandate of N P A, honor the mission of environment, and we continue for demolition. And you, we get the demolition plant for the entire western area, let me surprise, so we power our family. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, on that note, I think say I will cancel my sister, uh, when I in the. Chair person for the Commission on Environment, Maya. Here, we will go, we will go inside the next five, ten minutes, here, I will not project more. Hey, sister. Hey. One minute, one more time, the next five, ten minutes, you know, since I've taken over. In one minute.
I pick up some things there, where we start the presentation. Where the time for say, let's about sixteen X hours. Um, let's speak say, I want to that. I want, I want a kitty, not a poach. Which is very bad. Then. One thing I believe say, the standing is our, so we did for us enforcement of law. That is very, very important. If not enforced the law, and then we pull thousands of things, every, let's say, everything, things that are true. Um, I just get a message from the world of home, when I'm dying, um. That was a encouragement, where they still talk about this, um, worker, sorry, island some area. Trust me, if you not enforced the law, and then the hospital want to some people, trust me. And for Nazi, they're quoting, um, Madame, they swear back still. One thing, if you may not help us set example to certain people. Don't forget about family, don't forget about bad neighbor. You as a leader, therefore, accept the bad them always, as long as you know, they are good things you give. Five people go hate you because you do the right thing. But thousands of people go bless you too, because you do the wrong, right thing. So, me, I don't believe as a leader of the community. Let me work as one, let me can bless this and protect the good kids all the time. The planting of trees, which is very good. Some person, the ministry here, they go don't plant trees, they act a one to three, I will go notice the trees, and they continue. They go wash their back, just for making a plant, and then build houses, where they long run, they go affect you and the people. Someone will say, me, I just want to make a pizza. Only job, we, even if you build house, and I check out, and pizza you get. If we extend the building on crack, I saw the tongue, they extend, I saw the pizza, I go extend.
Absolutely.
So, the green belts, we don't only see in areas with the last day. Standing is, and they don't say that it's supposed, uh, the market is not supply areas. If you, and they sit there, everybody is say, green belts, somebody, this I mean, sourdough. Make this color, we bring a drink, they fear, and no type of, the market is green belts. So, this was the day I was, we tell for them, cause we lost him. Don't see now somebody, even if they don't build houses. Trust me, then they, then they demolish, and then they push the market. If not, you get from extend beyond.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All the things, uh, who, but I believe say, we work as one family, we protect the western area, I just.
Fantastic, thank you very much. Uh, I will now go over to the deputy D G, uh, on the national disaster management, and then from there. Uh, we will come to the honorable minister, or say Tata Tui, again, closing statement. Uh, but before that, I just give some few announcements. Number one, we encourage everybody for Sedona in seats. Uh, you, you don't favorite part, now they cast over the program, Mr. Minister, that's who they can call item thirteen. Hmm? Item thirteen, they say, who that not Sedona in seat, item thirteen, not the meter. Number one. Number two, then get administrative arrangements. Hmm? Now, Sabit in the minute, who that not Sabit, he can go. We will explain to him later, that left you know my number, we call it, explain to you. But administrative arrangements, they, and that administrative arrangement, but then you say, now you say like item thirteen. You for Sedona, hmm, could you mark, could you, then they come meet you. Ah, so do you have one lot of Sabit and they? Uh, somebody pack A W K eight four four. A W K eight four four. Apparently, you block somebody, then people like that, they say they get very weird, they want to. You are not allowed, they let them go, because you only let them buy item thirteen, and administrative arrangements, and I try for them. Yeah, who that get this motor car, let them have a, they let them come up a room for us, a bit. Uh, yeah, no, I will come to, I will come to the deputy D G, and then I come to you, and then, uh, minister go round up now for we.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
You get, you get one minute, sir.
Yes, um. I want to tell everybody, exactly, for all these polarities, I would choose, we will not zoom in compared to. Um, so, for giving the issue of events, I will repeat. The grievance, uh, it's very important that we review of government, you can very carefully. Um, you know, the very important place, from all the institutions that are, they are entered, equipment beyond having. For instance, of yours, we will review very carefully, because once, government cannot escape me. They will go back to your capacity, so I will not recall, and I will very much appreciate, once in, government cannot escape from grievance. The second point, people that we still need to construction on waterways, and that will constitute a disaster. I will encourage everybody, go on, and have a view, and have a shot, you, and as we don't accept that crisis, we not go, it may constitute a disaster. Uh, the second, the third point is, love step, love for the new deforestation. The deforestation, again, best you have to improve, on the environment, on human security, of environmental security, and even certain major workers. So, avoid deforestation. The third point is, what they throw, thirteen inside, and respond with sadness, love for that, because they will see clearly. Any time they can, the fighters, the voters, and the field, and the host body, and the government. The issue, other action here, now, issue of sand mining. Love left, they do sand mining around places. At the end of the day, they break for us, and it will involve me, it will involve me back in certain way. The last one, I want to emphasize, now, the issue of land protection. We not allow, we not create that, and we see, there are a few days. And not so say they will, it is for, as you ever do, come back in the next. So, I will, I will, I will give those people, you are right. The last statement I don't wait. The man will say, star particular area, it will likely cause disaster. That area, they want our overview. You get the distinction between landslide and scorpions. What you have to come in on the landslide, not in the scorpions. What you do, they reference, have a star area, and scorpions. Uh, I will express, say, we not go read a particular point.
Bonatina. Hello? Hello? Yeah, Joe, go on, go on.
So.
Yeah.
And so, what you need to say is that, um, that particular area, and the room, we not allow for that, it better scorpions. We not necessarily scorpions, or inside this decision. We actually need to some text. Scorpions, I will call them, I might back, who say about the people that is crazy, they fall, who they die. I will tell you initially, what you don't see inside this decision, now, for last minutes. Uh, we have a whole, major meeting in the national disaster committee, is, I tell you, I will discuss all the issues. Now, we put together a policy recommendation for government for combat, on basis of their current duties. But above all, the last statement, as I said, for top, Maya. Every individual, your security, you can't force, and then you can't force. And you probably should say, you protect yourself, before you protect the next person. I want to take, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, uh, deputy D G. I will pass the mic right over to, uh, this, now, your favorite chairman, uh, the district captain. How come I don't know that the district captain will say again? I don't know my guy, but let me talk, until you are the cancer. Uh huh, so, I'll be here, I'll be on time, I usually go to, I say, two minutes, round up, and then, uh, let the minister say, see, everybody in closing courses, thank you.
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Chairman. The first point, in the area of enforcement. In all areas, western area, who are this, they about to increase the number of metro police, so that we will continue. With proper enforcement. Now, I have a layout for recruits, about fifty personnel, who are to the existing metro police. So, that I just ask one quick question, there fifty personnel, and they, they go on a concentrated form, or a council repер? Council repер? That, but is it subsidy, now, now, based on subsidies from, on allocation. Own source revenue. Own source, yes. For this year, hello, we project, for the old source revenue, about participate in million, new leos.
Okay.
And we are ready to fight for it.
Okay.
Collaboration, council, ready for collaboration.
Own source.
Strongly, with the ministry of government, ministry of lands, N P A A. We talk of national disaster agents, and other white ministers, for it we face, this face, strong one. And I will, for now, after here, I get a meeting with the ministry of lands, for say how we can able, for plan. With this piece, for power, in terms of land management, at the western area who are this. Because we don't save people, then they come too much, and encourage into certain areas, where they not for being. And that's again, I go, and there, there, with the office of national security, ministry of environment. Shortly, last month, on a known mission, who would say for demolish certain areas. And that we see, we empower itself, for me to be saying, we continue with short. Now, we talk of devolve. Ministry of environment, devolve a staff to me, which is, I will say, is a minister, Louis Sky, for capacities. Then we staff here, waiting, we swing, because then they go go a long way, so that they go meet up to the tax, when we be saying, we go there with. Shortly, we get the project here, and we see, say, the money, where government they sell, to the ministry. So, the box shop for environment, it's too small, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, for a whole year. That's too small, which is that they go to, they not go protect it, with the district, where are the third largest districts, and the third populated district, to me, I see a room. I want to make, we watch into that, and then we not say, we push that, so what, so what? Because we are projects, we only do not be piaga. Not in that project, we get certain portion, who we put for in the government. But Louis, I foresee, how we be see, if we want, without money, definitely, that they not go before. We talk about the dog sites. My brother, the dog sites, if you watch us at now, hook up a dog pitch, you will find out, say, council, that are those one side. The first, senior one, for say how, we can push and do, which we don't cite there. Don't think we are ready to hear. Government, there is a policy, for the ministry of, I mean, the ministry of transport, that, don't think we are. We know the rights, and nobody out there, not get the rights for service there. And that policy, then, is a open institution. When there is a policy, we can't go against it, we go with that particular policy. If you watch now, we only have three, we operationally, because, now then they call for it, and service there. They will try all the best for service there. Now, talking about the school bus, we bother those ask, how is the school bus doing? I want to tell you, say, they all day in running order.
Okay.
And we will go on with it, when school open, you see a ball out, ask it, they walk.
Thank you.
The next. We want the only thing in running order.
Thirty seconds, thirty seconds.
Don't, the next, thirty seconds, don't close the room. You know, bad.
Hmm.
Time for put it forward, for me to see, we go, we go on, we go on. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, uh, deputy chair. Uh, finally, ladies and gentlemen, uh, we almost got to the end of this program. Uh, now, just to let you know, I'm taking, or I'm a partner, and can be part of this conversation. Uh, this program, now, the ministry of environment, uh, through the ministry of information and communications. Uh, this program, now the Ministry of Environment, uh, through the Ministry of Information and Communications, and we only, nothing else, now, the lot of one, it's a quick, we done in five minutes. We are, the lot of one, it's we done in five minutes. And we only, nothing else, now, I'm in the host, uh, the Minister, and the deputy Minister, unavoidable, they have said, because they get all our official engagement, and assignments said. And so they therefore ask me, uh, for feeling the gap, for be part of this very important conversation. Two other information, there are now public interest, for us, one for who now before I look back the mic to the Minister. Number one, we are, the lot of prayer God, in support for you, sir, we know say, in the coming weeks, uh, they get international officials, they wait, they wait the one, and they, Salom get chance again for qualify for the nation's score. I think say, there's officials, the day they happen, in September, they are supposed to play the home match, now, uh, one party, home match, then Alagia, and then they go away, I think, that's the challenge of the support for your stuff. We are, the lot of put on under you, sir, you know say, now we own, now we local champion, then everyone, and they let go, we can go again for the next nation's score. And then finally, uh, they also, we use full for them, and no say, that his excellency the President, in Tavaya, that you just mad at you, uh, don't go on an official tip, uh, to China, in, and the Palestinian Republic of Saudi Arabia. Uh, Mrs. Fatima, mad at you, uh, based on the official invitation, will the Chinese government extend to his excellency the President, uh, for be part of that meeting, they say, his excellency the President, is in China, to speak, for hopeful that deep in a strength in ties between Salom and China, and foresee how much he go for bring comeback for win. Uh, one other information, and that we know say, last month, now in Salom, we get the presidency of, uh, the US Security Council, we may get for make President, you may get for daily for chair, one for an session today, of the Security Council meeting. Last month, August, now, we don't have, uh, so we don't handle that to some other country, but that we still maintain with non-permanent states, that the US Security Council, and that non-permanent status, they are, they say, open in January of twenty twenty-six. So we guess, most of the, we will for further, the African ambition, when I forget, uh, permanent state and Security Council, like, talk for peace and stability, and plenty of that in the office, and you know, they are located for, and will continue for their location for that. So, uh, finally, I have an order now to the Minister, for say Tata to all, and gain closing remarks. I tell you now, twenty seconds, I not forget, so now, for the now, I sit there, oh, me, I just don't stop food, I wait for my item thirteen for camera. You know, and not that, who that now, what are the administrative arrangements, I have to do that, where can I put a go?
Thank you very much, for you, so. Uh, hello? Yeah, no, that's our meeting.
I want to tell family, they all thank you, uh, for going on country. Uh, this, now just the start, this now, family talk, we get for continue. Uh, and part of this family talk, yeah, owner the whole government accountable, but governments, if they look to owner the community, but they owner say play owner parts. Now only when, we only serve accountable, we able for do things, we will change, uh, some of them behavior, yeah, where they cause problems. Uh, I want, we would all the good, now, us today, now we just think of how the deforestation, or they see, now this western, Ega Peninsula National Park, how it affect we all. How it affect we all, through the fact that it creates insecurity of water supply. I should say, we all now need water, whether now for us, for cook, for the all, other thing, the way people that use water for now us. And also, that the forestation, they they contribute, uh, to disaster, the way we don't see. Uh, especially during the season, whether now flooding, whether, you know, you see stone come up, up, in, in London. Um, or whether now, uh, you know, hosting the photo, or nothing, and they, now because of the deforestation. The sand mining also, I want, that we, all the good, that we can, the top old, on top of sand mining, go at the communities. When I will remind the sand, at some point, we will consider a law, that we get that family talk there. That we understand, that we understand, that's clear understanding of how the way, way people they try for circumvents by laws, how that they negatively affect communities. And how it that they continue, in order for one that, one could begin. So, governments, if people continue for floods, then laws, then they, then governments will therefore take action. I also want, that we think about the, the wetlands, the mangroves, what would they go brush? Um, first of all, nobody know for the go brush mangrove, now feet or say they go make farm. Then they, I know really understand, and it, possibly they go brush mangrove, and mangrove, who they say they make farm, a girl that, a girl that is him, by making the go brush, that brush there. Uh, so again, one on the communities, now, now they near the end here, when you see something, and possess something, the man get access to the council, the council get access to the council. Whether now the Chair or the Deputy Chair, the council get access to the Ministry. It are direct to the Ministry of Environment, or through the Ministry of Local Governments. So they are family, they never all work together, so the problem here, if we work together, we be able for address there. If on Monday, by own, then situation will continue for get worse. And this environment, we, who they look after, not to regret that, now, thing we inherit from we papa there, from we granny there, from we great-grandpa there, and that environment will therefore pass on to begin and grand beginning. So they are, they are all our wish to have, and the only way we give for better than, is if we all work together. So I tell now, thank you, and I the hope for continue this conversation, yeah. And I hope we now go back to now, homes and families safely. Thank you.
Sally Alaa Muhammad. Photos? That, although I push a photo there. This is been to.
Um, viewers, I have to say, thank you. Um, we appreciate one our time, uh, one our take for watch the town hall, and those who like and share the live coverage. We all are listening, the town hall, the various contributions, from citizens, from government, um, stakeholders, them, everybody don't talk. Waiting at the way forward, for protect and preserve, we forest, um, areas them. So, the Ministry of Information, they collaborate with Ministry of Environment, well, I call them, they say they are to honor the people them, where they face the environment, hold on, I understand, waiting at the precaution, if we not handle the environment with care. So, the conversation will continue, um, this are just starts, they encourage everyone to continue, to follow the Ministry of Information and Civic Education. Within our platform, WhatsApp, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, YouTube, you get to, as we then, just say, bring to now, government information. Once more, thank you all for watching, uh, we don't count to an end of this, um, town hall, we focus on the environment. Thank you all.